Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for September 26, 2023. Our first item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone from the public here tonight who would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. If everybody could put their cellphones on mute, would be appreciated. Our next item on our agenda is minutes. We had one set of minutes for our September 12 meeting. If there's no questions or comments, we can accept these by consensus.
Agreed.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, okay, thank you. Okay, we will get right into our new business. Our first item is Application 23-33P Pete's RV Temporary and Conditional Renewal. Is there somebody here to represent the applicant?
All right, that'd be me, David Gould. How was everyone tonight?
Good evening.
Just looking to renew our permit there for another two years.
Okay. Do you have a presentation, or are you just...okay, everything the same?
Everything's the same, yes, all right.
Okay, great. Then at this time...
Nothing's changed.
We will turn to our Director of Planning, Michelle Leit.
Thank you. So this is a request for renewable two-year temporary conditional permit for the storage of campers on approximately a half acre on property at 395 John Fitch Boulevard. It's north of the site of Chapel Road in our general commercial zone. This was originally permitted in July of 2019, and the applicant's been coming back. Now this will be the third time. The applicant stores up to about 35 campers in an area on this site. This site is adjacent to Pete's RV campers there, so this is a different site that is... So the reason for the temporary conditional permit is because it is a standalone site, and they're using it just for the storage of campers. So, storage of campers, it's a permitted use in sale of campers, it's permitted use in our general commercial zone. If they had a building on the site, they wouldn't be in here for renewals like they are. But since they're just using it for storage, they come back every two years. The site is accessed by Route 5, but they do go in between the existing Pete's RV site there, so they use a golf cart going in between, so there really is no vehicles coming and going from the Route 5 entrance. The site has currently had automotive use historically, and as I mentioned, the driveway is not currently being used. The temporary conditional permit regulation states that they may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Such approval may be given after a public hearing if, in the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will substantially serve, and the appropriate use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. The commission does allow renewals by just a regular meeting when we don't have any concerns for the application. And we have not had any comments in the last two years. If any, you remember the original application, there was some regrading that was done to help flatten out the site, and there's been really no issues since that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll turn to any engineering comments? Jeff Doolittle?
No engineering comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, open it up. Commissioner Cavatnero?
Um, no. No comments at all.
Commissioner Vitiri?
No, no comments.
Commissioner Foley?
No comment.
Commissioner Wagner?
Nothing.
Commissioner Dexter?
No comment.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
No comment.
Commissioner Carey?
No comments.
No comments, okay. And I have no comments. Commissioners, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Dexter?
Yeah, to approve Application 23-33P. This is for Pete's RV Storage Temporary and Conditional Renewal of the Permit. This is a request for a two-year temporary and conditional permit for storage of up to 35 RV campers on property located at 395 John Fitch Boulevard, G C Zone. The storage area is limited to 35 campers, must be accessed through the adjacent lot to the north. Temporary and conditional permit will expire on 9/19/25, Michelle? Not 23, 25, okay. And will have to be renewed that time if the use is to continue.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck. There...is there a motion you'd like to make, Commissioner Foley?
Yeah, I'd like to have the Application 23-35P South Windsor Entertainment TNC Renewal go ahead of the line to number two rather than number three.
Okay, so we have a motion to take number three up next.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so our next item is Application 23-35P South Windsor Entertainment TNC Renewal. Good evening.
Hey, Doug Nation, 660 Main Street, South Windsor. What do you want me to say? We're just here to renew it.
Okay.
I think we're on our sixth year, aren't we?
Any changes?
No, but I did agree with Michelle that I got to get to the police department and come up with a crosswalk, so I'll take care of that.
Okay. Okay, if you've got nothing further, we'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Leit.
Thank you. So this is a renewal of a two-year temporary conditional permit to operate the Haunted Walk on property at 240 Governor's Highway in the industrial zone. This will be the seventh season. The event will run from September 30th through November 4th with hours of operation, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., or when the crowds dissipate sometimes, a little bit later. Parking for the event will be onsite with overflow parking directly across the street at 195 Governor's Highway. In the past, portable lighting has been used and other measures to include security parking attendant. The police, in speaking with Sergeant Bunidachi today, he requested that Doug just contact him and just make arrangements for the crosswalk area to make sure the police is aware of where they'll be crossing. The applicant's again requesting a permit to offer beer and wine for sale per state requirements under their Nomad's permit. This is a temporary event and will be required to have a Health Department permit. Again, the temporary conditional permit allows the commission to grant for a period not to exceed two years, may be given after a public hearing if, in the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will substantially serve, and the appropriate use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. We have not had any concerns expressed to our office for this event over the past two years.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn to engineering, Jeff Doolittle?
Thank you. No engineering comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, Commissioner Carey, do you have anything?
No.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
No comment.
Commissioner Dexter?
No comment.
Commissioner Wagner?
No comment.
Commissioner Foley?
No comments.
Commissioner Vitiri?
No comment.
Commissioner Cavatnero?
No comment.
Okay, and I have no comments.
Beautiful.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Wagner?
I move we approve Application 23-35P Nightmare Acres Haunted Walk. Two-year temporary and conditional permit for the Haunted Walk will expire September 26, 2025, two-year maximum. Adequate nighttime lighting shall be added to ensure patrons' safety. When upside parking is being utilized, security personnel must be present to cross patrons. If there are building structures, signs, or other items that require a building permit or other town approvals and permits, all such approvals or permits must be obtained prior to construction or use of the site. A food permit is required from the Health Department for the sale of beer and wine.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
May I make another motion?
Sure.
I move we take up item Application 48P Berry Equipment Ahead of the Longleaf Developers.
Actually, they're waiting for Mr. DeMeili to show up, so I think they'd prefer not to be brought forward.
Okay. So you withdraw that motion?
I withdraw.
Okay, then, okay. So our next item of business is Application 23-26P Longleaf Developers LLC. Do we have somebody here to represent the applicant?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury at the firm of Alter and Pearson. And we appear tonight on behalf of the developer of the project that is known as the residences or the residents at Evergreen Walk. In addition to comments that I will make, you'll also hear from Jim Cassidy, who is our project engineer, and Howard Rappaport, who is the developer's representative with respect to information to be provided to the commission. As the agenda notes, we're here tonight seeking site plan approval for 165 units of multifamily housing to be developed on 31.7 acres of the Evergreen Walk property. The proposed development is westerly of Camerick Avenue and westerly of the Tempo multifamily development that was previously completed by the same development company that proposes this project. Way of reminding everyone, on July 12, 2022, this commission approved a text amendment to the Buckland Gateway Development Zone Regulation, and also reviewed and approved a general plan of development for 165-unit multifamily development as proposed this evening. The principal elements of the schematic plan that was submitted at the time of the consideration of the general plan of development have remained the same. The developer has made changes to that plan for several reasons, which we'll go into some detail about this evening. Jim, can you put up the site plan? For those of you with good memories, I don't count myself in that group, but you'll notice some changes in the arrangement of the proposed buildings. Mr. Rappaport and his design group took into account the comments made at the earlier public hearing with respect to potential impacts that neighbors to the west of the site anticipated if the proposed four-story buildings were located to the westerlymost portion of the project, which would be towards the stormwater basin that you see at the edge of the project. In response to those concerns, change was made, and now two-story, lower-scale, lower-impression buildings are proposed in that area so that the four-story buildings are much more located in the center internal portion of the development away from those neighbors who expressed those The mix of one- and two-bedroom units has not changed, nor has the general site layout with the road network and pedestrian walkways and trails, all of which Mr. Cassidy will discuss in much greater detail. The final plan presented tonight meets or exceeds all of the bulk requirements of the zone with respect to density, parking setbacks, impervious coverage, building height. I think that you will find they are all in conformance to the regulations for the Gateway Development Zone. Prior to tonight's presentation, we appeared before the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency Conservation Commission and received the necessary...well, we received the unanimous approval for necessary wetlands permits for the project to proceed. The plan has been presented to the Architecture and Design Review Committee with a favorable review and response from that group. Property in this development will be served by public water and public sanitary sewer, both of which have adequate capacity with respect to this development. The original design has really evolved over a period of time since you adopted the regulation in July of 2022, and a critical design element that has carried through this project is to create adaptable, accessible units in a manner in which potential tenants, particularly tenants with disabilities, will be able to make use of these properties as an appropriate housing option. We did that for several reasons. One is to achieve the very widest appeal and to a population that is underserved. Mr. Rappaport and his company own and manage a number of projects, and the opportunity to create adaptable, accessible units served by elevators is one that he thinks is important and offers an opportunity for people who otherwise might not be able to make use of apartment living that would be offered by this project. Part of the proposal that is before you tonight is to create 21 affordable units, which will be dispersed throughout the elevator-served, adaptable, accessible units in buildings that are labeled Building 10 and 11 on the plan that's displayed for your information. There will be eight one-bedroom and 13 two-bedroom units created within this affordable plan. We submitted an affordable housing plan in advance of the hearing, developed much along the guidelines of 830G, but adapted to meet the standards of your regulation as well. And I want to say I very much appreciate the fact that commission members took the time and made the effort to review that plan and make us aware of some of the concerns that were felt should be addressed, and I want to address those at this point. The first concern that I'm aware of is that there's some ambiguity in the language that I used. I guess that's a lawyer's dilemma lots of times, but it was pointed out that it wasn't clear in terms of the process by which the affordable units would be developed in Buildings 10 and 11. In other words, there was a concern, at least I gathered from the comment, that those buildings would be delayed to the end of the project, and the concern is that developer never gets to the end of the project, and you never get the affordable units constructed in a timely way. And looking at the language that I provided, I can certainly see why that would be a matter of concern. Discussed it with Mr. Rappaport. He agrees that it's a legitimate concern that should be addressed. Our suggestion is that you might consider, if you see fit to approve this project, that you incorporate a condition of approval, and I would suggest respectfully, perhaps something along the lines of a condition of approval that says, "No greater than 45 certificates of occupancy shall be issued for the cottage-style units until certificates of occupancy have been issued for Buildings 10 and 11 containing the 21 affordable units." So that the last 45 cottage units would not be eligible for certificates of occupancy until the 21 affordable units in those buildings were fully online, so that the commission has the reassurance that the developer will stay the course and finish the project, and you will get the 21 affordable units fully certified with certificates of occupancy prior to the completion of the last half of the cottage units. Mr. Rappaport and I have discussed that. He's very comfortable with that as a condition of approval if the commission thinks that that's appropriate. We also noted, based on the comments, that there's a disconnect between the affordability plan and the actual building plans that were presented as part of the application. What's missing on those building plans are unit numbers. So that while you can see a list of units that will be affordable identified in the affordability plan, it's impossible for you to look at the building plans and figure out where those units are because we didn't put the numbers on the units and the plans that you have. I will represent to the commission that the units are dispersed throughout the buildings and throughout the floors of the buildings so that they're not clustered or grouped in any way. And again, if commission sees fit to act on this application, we would certainly be perfectly willing to accept the condition that indicates that a plan identifying unit numbers be submitted as part of the materials to be reviewed by staff and confirm that what I've represented as far as dispersal and consistency of the unit numbers has been achieved. That was really an oversight by us that we didn't complete the unit number designation on the plans that we submitted. Plans do exist with unit numbers, we simply didn't submit those to you. And it was a good point to make to us, and we can correct that shortcoming. There was a question as to tenant responsibility for various mechanical systems or repairs of doors, windows, and the like. The first thing I would say is that all of the tenants, whether they're occupying Housing Opportunity Development Units, HOD units, or market units, are going to be bound by the same lease. The only difference in the affordable unit lease are the additional paragraphs that you find in the affordability plan that outline the responsibilities and limitations of the affordable units. But as far as the responsibilities of tenant and landlord, if a tenant does damage to a unit, damages a door, damages a window, breaks something in the unit through neglect or abuse, the tenant is responsible for that. And that's whether they're a market-rate tenant or an affordable unit tenant. But otherwise, all of the mechanical systems and the maintenance of that unit and the general upkeep of that unit, in the course of normal wear and tear or building defects that come to light and the like, those fall to the landlord. That's not different in any rental situation, multi-housing rental situation, and it would be no different here. Tenants would be responsible for damage they cause, landlord is responsible for the long-term maintenance and upkeep of the units. There was a question, and I frankly don't know what a plant's capacity is, but I assume that what was being asked of me was, do the affordable units get exactly the same appliances as the market-rate units? We represent that in the affordability plan that they'll be identical. I'm representing that to you tonight. Everything that goes into a market-rate unit will be exactly the same as goes into an affordable unit. So there's no difference in the measure of finishes or the nature of the appliances that are provided as part of the rental agreement. There were some other comments that were made. Mr. Cassidy, because they're his plans that the comments were directed at, will respond to those during his part of our presentation. The affordable housing plan that you have is consistent with the methodology of 830G in many ways, and I'll take one minute to explain how it will work in the real world of tenants occupying these affordable units. At the outset, they will have to apply, provide financial information to demonstrate that they qualify for the units based on the 80% income level that's established for workforce housing. As I'm sure Michelle knows, but I'll also represent to you that creating this 80% workforce housing counts towards the number of affordable units that DOH keeps track of, and you get credit for those, even though this would not be an 830G affordable housing project. And then, in the management of these affordable units on a year-to-year basis, the tenants have to requalify. If a tenant has an increase in income and exceeds the levels that are permitted within these affordable units, they aren't immediately evicted. That's not how this works, but they're going to have to find other arrangements to live. They're not going to be qualified any longer for the affordable unit, and the idea is that it needs to be made available to people who will qualify. Once in place, the system works very well. The people who take advantage of occupying these units understand their responsibilities in terms of continuing to qualify on an income basis, and a developer who's experienced in this understands that each year there's going to be a process for these people to requalify. And if they don't, then because they've been successful in some way in terms of their income, then they have to move on so this unit can be... income, then they have to move on so this unit can be made available for someone who does qualify. They're deed restricted. In other words, the documents are filed on the land records, the units are established in accordance with your requirements, they have a forty-year affordability span to them, and I will say to you that in my experience, and I've had some experience with these kinds of housing projects, as well as projects under Section Eight Housing as well, it provides a tremendous opportunity for people to establish themselves in a community and with suitable housing that otherwise would not be available. So creating these twenty-one units is, we think, from our standpoint, a very good thing and certainly good program for South Windsor. My final comments are these, that I believe the plans that we've submitted to you meet all of the requirements of the zoning regulations and meet the standards of site plan approval that you have set out in your regulations. If any commissioner thinks we've fallen short in any regard in that manner, please tell us so that we can respond. Jim Cassidy has done a really good job in terms of site design, and he received comments from Mr. Doolittle's group early on. He's already amended the plans and resubmitted changes to those plans in response to engineering comments, and so we think that the plan is in, is in pretty good shape in terms of your opportunity for review. And as I indicated, we're happy to address any element of this that you have questions on or need further information. With that, I'll ask Mr. Cassidy to walk you in some of the high-level engineering aspects of the project, and then you'll hear from Mr. Rappaport in terms of the design and functionality of the project. Thank you.
Before, I just note that the drawing you have up there is not the same as the drawing we received in terms of where the buildings are. We have drawings where the four-story buildings are on the western, southwestern side, so we don't actually have the right drawings.
I don't know what. Did I make to come up and look at what you have?
Yeah. Please. Oh, okay. All right, my mistake. Then...
I think the arrow, there's no north arrow on the prints. Oh, okay, I see it now. Yep.
Okay. All right, I guess.
Sure?
Yeah.
Correct. He had a deleted numeral on one of the buildings as these plans were final. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cassidy.
Okay, now I see. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer and principal with the firm Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. If I can just scroll back a few sheets here.
Excuse me. Yeah, please, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Again, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy. I'm professional engineer and principal with the firm Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. My office is located at six thirty Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut, here tonight representing Longleaf developers for the development of what we call Unit Seven C and the Evergreen Walk development. First slide I'd like to bring up. The first slide is just an existing site photo of the overall property. The site outlined in red, again referred to as Unit Seven C, consists of a total area of thirty-one point six eight acres. As Mr. Attorney Alter had mentioned, it's to the west of Tammerack Avenue. Tammerack Avenue is on the bottom of the page. I'll try to use this mouse as a pointer here. This would be Tammerack Avenue. This is Buckland Road up here, so this is the Evergreen Shops in this section here. As we continue down Tammerack, I believe this road is called the West Service Road. The new hotel is located here, and then this development here is the Tempo Residential apartment development that was done by Continental Properties, bounded on the bottom or the south by existing residents. And in addition to, there is a planning and development, development at the southwestly corner of the site, and then a piece of open space land off to the west here. The upper portion, this is another portion of the Evergreen Walk development. This site over here is where the Costco store was recently built. The site itself, if you were to go out there, the majority of the site is an open meadow, shown by the lighter green area on this site. Presently, there's a temporary drainage swale running in a westerly direction. This conveys the water from the Evergreen Walk development into a stormwater management basin at the far west end of the property. In addition to, there's another stormwater management basin along the south edge of the property that's also picking up water from Tammerack and a portion of the Evergreen Walk commercial portion of the development. The perimeter is wooded with deciduous and conifers around the entire perimeter of it. There are wetlands around the entire perimeter of it, and as mentioned, we have been before the Wetlands Commission already, and we have received approval as part of the application. Back on July fifth, we received approval for the development of this property. What we're proposing to do, and you've probably seen resemblance of this plan previously, we're proposing to develop it with another multifamily development. This would be, I'm not going to say extension of the Tempo Development, but it would be continuation of multifamily development. But what we're trying to do here is provide a different type of product as to what's presently in the Tempo Development. If you've been through Tempo, it consists of multi-story, three-story buildings with twenty-four units per each building, main access drive off the center, and all the buildings around the perimeter of it. Our development, we're trying to introduce another project, another product, being what we call a cottage-style unit. A cottage-style unit is a building where it basically is more like individual living. There's ten to five units per building, but each building actually has a dedicated garage space with access rate from that garage space into the unit. And Mr. Rappaport will get into the overall design of the building a little bit later on the presentation to show you how that works in the floor plans. So the way the building, the property is set up is we're going to access off the ends of what, at this point, the road is called Longleaf. We're providing, the dark gray line represents the new roadway system with a turnaround as you come into our site. Directly opposite the turnaround, we're proposing to have a clubhouse, and then off that turnaround, there's two spurs off that provide an entire perimeter road around the entire development. Along the outside edge of the perimeter road is where you're going to have these cottage-style units. So along this whole south side, you have two ten-unit buildings, and then there's two five-unit buildings. Along the west side, you have these two ten-unit buildings, and then down along the north and the east side, you have these ten-unit buildings, and then there are two ten-unit buildings in the center. As Attorney Alter had mentioned, we previously came before you, we had proposed to have a thirty-eight unit building and a twelve-unit building down at this end of the project. There was concerns from the neighbors, those buildings were four-story structures, there was concern about the height of those structures as they relate to the adjoining properties. So we went back, we took a look at it, we updated the site plan. We did, as we proposed, to put the taller buildings, the four-story buildings, more in the center. We felt overall it was better for the development, and that as you come off the Tempo Development, you kind of, you transition a little bit more naturally into our development where you have a similar type of structure surrounded by the clubhouse. So these two buildings, this one here would be a thirty-seven unit building, and this one here would be a thirty-eight unit building. So in total, we're looking for the cottage-style units. We'll have a total of ninety cottage-style units. And then to the center, this building will be a thirty-eight, this one is a thirty-seven, so there are thirty, sorry, seventy-five total, the multifamily-type units for a total of one hundred and sixty-five units. This is just a blow-up of that area associated with the development of the buildings. Obviously, we need to provide parking. As I mentioned, for the cottage-style units, what happens is there's going to be one garage space for each unit, so you have twenty, sorry, ninety garage spaces. In addition to, there's one driveway space in front of each garage for additional ninety parking spaces. We've also situated, where we have an access drive that services these garages, to the end of it, we've situated some additional parking spaces. They range from about six to eight parking spaces at the end of each one of those driveways for visitors that may come to visit people in those cottage-style units. The majority of our parking is actually going to be surrounded around the clubhouse area, then in front of the two multifamily buildings. Your requirement requires that we provide, this is a parking table that was on the plan, we are required to provide a total of one point seven five spaces per dwelling unit, so we need to provide a total of two hundred and eighty-nine spaces. When we go through the math, we have, again, we have ninety driveway spaces, sorry, ninety garage spaces for a hundred and eighty, and then a hundred and eighty-nine what we call surface spaces. So we actually have a total of three hundred and sixty-nine spaces, so we're actually parked at a rate of about two point two four. We typically like to go a little bit higher. We find it works better for our developments, more realistic number for the overall development. In addition to, we went through the handicap or ADA requirements for parking. We're required to provide eight ADA spaces. There are eight ADA spaces scattered throughout the site. Those spaces, there'd be two in front of the thirty-eight unit building, two in front of the thirty-seven, and four in front of the clubhouse area. In addition to, in your regulations, you now have requirements for EV parking stations, or parking spaces. In interpreting your regulation or reviewing your regulation, it's our understanding that we need to provide ten percent of the required surface spaces to be EV, what we call charging-ready, in that we need at a minimum to have at least the infrastructure to support it and the conduit and everything in place to where those spaces are ultimately going to end up. In addition to, there's a requirement with the site plan that's submitted between, I think it's two thousand and twelve and now, that we actually need to install three percent of those required space, or the required spaces at this point. So we actually have to install, sorry, the charging units. So what I'm representing on this plan is we've looked at three areas for those. When we go through the math, we're finding we need to have a total of twenty EV charging stations, either ready or installed. So what we're looking to do is this green area highlighted on the plan would be six spaces that we're looking to actually install at this point. They'd be opposite the clubhouse. One of those spaces would have to be ADA accessible space, meaning a van accessible space, and for an ADA charging space, not only do you need the width and the cross-arch area, but you need additional length on the end of it. So as a part of the approval, we'd have to extend the pavement out about another four feet, provide access to around the charging unit in the face. The yellow highlighted areas are going to be the EV charging station ready, so there's going to be seven spaces here opposite the thirty-seven unit building, and then seven spaces here opposite the thirty-eight unit building. So the seven and seven and the six will make up the twenty spaces. Also in your regulation, what it says is when you have a multifamily development, you have covered our garage spaces, those spaces need to have the capability of being also EV-ready. So we have ninety garage spaces. Those spaces will be, those garage spaces will be equipped to be EV-charging-ready, but not installed, but they will be ready spaces. You also have requirements that we provide open space as part of your regulation. I prepared this plan just to highlight the different areas that we are looking at for open space. Your regulations, if I go through the table, what it says is that for each dwelling unit, I need to provide seven hundred and fifty square feet of open space. It continues to say that that open space can be used as preservation of wetlands, wooded areas, open lawns, et cetera, but not more than twenty percent of the required open space can be such things as wetlands. So the required open space cannot be more than that. When we go through the math, a hundred and sixty-five units times seven fifty, we need to provide a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty square feet. When I take a look, go back at this plan, what I'm representing on this plan are the blue areas, light blue areas are the areas of the wetlands. The green areas are the areas of non-wetlands, but areas that would be used preservation, also active recreation. There is a whole trail network system as part of the Evergreen Walk development that runs through the perimeter of this green area. In addition to, I have a yellow area on this plan. This would be an area for what we'll call a more active open space. This is the outdoor amenity area associated with the clubhouse where we'd have such things as pools, seating areas, and fire pits. So when we go through the math, what we actually end up having in total for preservation, including wetlands and walking trails, there's actually nine hundred and forty-four thousand, eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two, giving us a total of open space area of nine hundred and fifty-five, three thirty-two. Now again, there is a large portion of that is wetlands, it's about five hundred and fifty thousand. So the remaining area, when I take away the wetlands area, works out to about four hundred and two, four hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty-four square feet. If I take a look at what we provided compared to what's actually required, that's going to, we're actually providing almost three point two-three, or three hundred and twenty-three percent of what's actually required, so we're in far excess of what's actually required for open space as part of this development. I'm going to flip back to this. I did not print, I did not put a copy of all the utility plans and all the drainage on the screen because it's a lot of information on there and gets a little cluttered, but I figured I'd use this one for an explanation. As mentioned, the development will be serviced by public sewers. Presently, what happens is there's a sewer main that runs all the way through the westerly side of the project. When we take a look at the grades of the development, it's actually sloping from the west down to the east, so there'll be a new gravity sewer main within the road system that would run all the way down here, and another main that would run down through this section of the road, connecting together at this intersection and then tying directly into that main. So gravity sewers would be provided throughout the entire development. The water, presently, the water system ends here at the end of Longleaf. In addition to, there's a stub within the Tempo Development that ends about this location here. We're going to actually be looping the system, so it would be extending it around the entire perimeter of the road system and then connecting back, providing a continuous loop for the water, and then all the units will be individually tied off, each building will be individually tied off, not the units, but the buildings will be individually tied off that main with fire hydrants along the entire system for fire protection. In addition to, I should mention as part of the layout, one of the comments we had early on was they wanted a connection for emergency purposes. We've continued to incorporate that into the overall plan, so that connection will continue. So there's two ways actually into this development, the main drive and this back way through Tempo will allow access. Drainage, if I go back to the existing addition, again, there's a temporary drainage swale that feeds through here. If anyone's been out here, what you find happens is that as the water comes through here, it's actually, over years, it's been eroding out as it enters into the stormwater management basin. As part of our development, we're going to be eliminating the temporary swale. We're going to be running a new forty-eight inch line through the road system down through these two buildings, down this road, down kind of in a westerly direction, and then we're going to be creating a new outlet at the far south end of this detention basin. This would be an outlet that would basically be better protected than it is today. It'll eliminate the erosion problems that are presently occurring. In addition to, as part of our wetlands approval, we are making a bunch of enhancements to this basin consisting of an additional filtration berm and additional landscaping throughout this entire stormwater basin. In addition to that, what we've done is around the perimeter of the development, especially along the south side, we're introducing a series of rain gardens. The rain gardens are designed to pick up a runoff of the small parking areas between the cottage-style units. Those rain gardens will capture the water, treat the first inch runoff, and eventually overflow to the south to this other stormwater management basin. There are some additional rain gardens within the center of the development that will do the same function, but they will actually discharge to a drainage system. Basically, what will happen is there'll be a drainage system within the entire southern portion of the roadway. That drainage system will connect to that forty-eight inch main, or forty-inch pipe that we're putting through. The whole northern portion, there would be a separate drainage system that collects all the stormwater running from the development. It'll discharge to a first stormwater quality basin in this location here. From there, there's an outlet structure that regulates the flow out. the same function, but they will actually discharge to a drainage system. Basically, what happened is there'd be a drainage system within the entire southern portion of the roadway. That drainage system will connect to that 48-inch main or 40-inch pipe that we're putting through. The whole northern portion, there would be a separate drainage system that collect all the stormwater running from the development. It'll discharge to a first stormwater quality basin in this location here. From there, there's an outlet structure that regulates the flow out, discharges to another smaller stormwater basin, and eventually there's another outlet structure here, discharging to a level spreader up at this north Westlake corner of the site. We did a stormwater model of the overall development. Post-development, we find happened with this stormwater management system and some enhancements we're making to the existing basin, we're looking at a zero increase in runoff post-development as it discharges from that level spreader and then continuing off in a north Westlake We've gone over the open space. The other thing I wanted to bring up, as part of the open space, one of the, I think, beautiful features of this overall development is the whole nature of walk system. As preserving this as open space, if anyone's been out there, there's presently a woodchip path that comes off of Longleaf Lane that kind of goes down along the south side of the existing stormwater management basin and then wraps back to the detention basin where there's a existing, it's a woodchip path along the backside, and then continuing off, off to the north and then back along the backside of the Costco development. We're going to be maintaining that system. We're actually be making some enhancements to it where our development gets near to it in this location here. So that's going to continue as an active recreation area for walking through the entire network of trails through the Evergreen Walk development. In addition to, what we're proposing, promoting is walkability of our development back to the shopping center. We do have a whole sidewalk system around the perimeter of the development, or the, I say, the inside road perimeter of our development with a crosswalk. There's a yellow line on this plan that represents the path that you can go, and you can actually get all the way back to the shops, about 1,800-foot walk back to the shops. In addition to, other amenities we're proposing is we do have a bike share area, the amenity area, and we have another bike rack area down at this far corner of this parking lot here. The advantage for this parking lot is it provides direct access from this parking lot to another walkway that gets you on that network system of trails. And then there's some other spots along here that you can actually get out of the development and then walk along a pathway. For instance, along this northerly end of the project, as I mentioned, there's a sewer line, it's maintained sewer line, it's mowed, so you can actually walk along that sewer line. Eventually, that sewer line intersects that woodchip path, so there's another point of access right opposite the 37 unit building where you can walk along the sewer line into that woodchip path. And then more importantly, not more importantly, but again, we do have a very well amenitized recreation area outside the clubhouse in this location here.
Excuse me?
Yes?
A lot of times when you start looking at that viewer, you're, instead of being here, you're over here like this, and it makes it difficult to hear. So if you could do your best to have the microphone in front of you, thank you.
We've also submitted a site lighting plan as part of the overall package. What we've represented with the site lighting plan is that there's not going to be any spray of light onto adjoining properties. Obviously, the majority of the adjoining property is going to be open space area. The only reason I bring up this sheet is that we're proposing for a lighting fixture is going to be a period-style fixture. If anyone's been through the Tempo development, it's going to be similar fixture to what's in there. It will be a full cutoff LED high-efficiency fixture mounted on poles. So I just brought that up as for example. Also, as part of your package, there's a detailed landscaping plan that was submitted. I am not a landscape architect, so I'm not going to go through all the specific trees and bore you with all the trees. What I could tell you as part of the landscaping plan is what we tried to do is do something that would complement, number one, the Tempo development, but also try to develop something where we have a nice street scape along the entire perimeter of the roadway. What you'll find is along this entire perimeter roadway, we have a series of canopy trees. Then on the outside of the perimeter, we have a series of evergreens consisting of about 240 either canopy or evergreens around the perimeter. In addition to, we have a series of foundation plantings around all the buildings. Those foundation plantings consist of another thousand shrubs that are on the perimeter and scattered throughout the overall site. There's a wide variety of types of plants. I can go through the entire list, but we do have an extensive list of plants. And as the existing developer has done in the Tempo development, it's always a very attractive landscape project like we'll have here also. With that, Howard? Sure. So we did receive some comments from one of the commission members, and again, thank you for, you know, reviewing the plans. Sorry, on my plans, a couple items that came up. Number one, we dealt with the honor drawing index sheets C1 and C2. They didn't technically, they didn't match the actual sheets, my apologies. The sheet index says it's a boundary and topographic survey. On the actual, on the actual sheet, it's on one sheet, it says boundary and topographic existing conditions. On the other sheet, it was a copy over, it says all surveys. So both of those will be corrected to match the index sheet. In addition to, there's some confusion in the building numbers. I apologize, but we had a last-minute change in building numbers. If you look at the original plans that were submitted and working with staff, there was requests that we renumber the buildings in a different manner. Originally, I had basically one starting here and going all the way on the perimeter, and then the center were the higher numbers. In getting ready to have numbers that work for the fire department and for mail service, we requested to go back and actually renumber the buildings. In doing that, what happened is this one building here says it's number one, it's actually missing one digit, it should be number 11. So that was corrected also on the plan. So that's actually building number 11, so it was corrected. The rest of the comments really dealt with building. If, and I'm sure Howard's going to get a little bit more into this, but there's a comment on sheet A21 about the clubhouse toilets accessible. Yes, they definitely have to be accessible. So that will be, or it is shown on the plans. Again, on sheet A21, this deals with the clubhouse, I believe, about the interior access to the storage area. If I can just switch. So this is a floor plan for the clubhouse. This would be the front as you're facing it from the road. This right would be the side along the parking lot. The back would be the amenity area. Off on this left side or the west side, there's an area that says storage. This is not accessible from the inside of the building. This is an area where during the off-season, where they need to store pool equipment, furniture, it's an additional storage space for those type of products. So there is not access from the inside of the building. Then your next comment dealt with sheets A31 and A32. These are the plans for the larger buildings, the 38 and the 37. Attorney Alter, I believe, has represented that there's no distinction, no change in style for the units, the interior of those units, they'll all be the same. We will have to identify those on a final plan. We just haven't got the actual numbers associated with the floor plans at this point. And then the final comment, once again, dealt with these two buildings. They didn't seem to line up with what's shown on the plans for building numbers, is what I understand the question was. Again, my apologies, that was due to a last-minute change in the numbering of the buildings on the site plan. The architectural plans didn't carry forward with those numbers, but on final plans, I have updated them, so the architectural plans actually correspond with the numbers on the building plans at this point. But that was the last minute change that happened at the end of last week. So that's why there's a little confusion in building numbers. And then I think there was one other comment that came up about the EV charging station is that I had mentioned, we feel that we meet in the requirement for the required number of EV charging stations, but there needs to be an accessible space. We are proposing to make one of those spaces an accessible space. I think the only clarification we need is to, based upon our interpretation of the regulation, we're required to provide one accessible space for the 20 that are required. The comment seemed to say that I need to have one accessible space for the three different areas where I had EV charging stations. If right now, we have adequate area to provide, go back to that. So right now, I have adequate area to make one of these spaces accessible. Technically, if we have to, we have adequate area over here where we can make these accessible also. It's just a matter of either extending the pavement out about seven feet to accommodate the crosshatch area, and then extending the sidewalk back about four feet around here to provide that access along the back of the EV charging station units. But that's something that we can also, you know, address on final plans, whatever the final interpretation of that is. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Howard Rapidport, developer for the project.
Thank you, Jim. For the record, my name is Howard Rapidport. I'm a principal with Continental Properties and Longleaf Developers. Some background on who we are, we're among the largest developers in the state, having developed over 1,200 luxury rental apartments over the past 10 years. We're proud to have developed Tempo on adjacent unit 7C, 7B rather, which we continue to own and operate. In addition to Tempo, our nearby developments include one Glastonbury, which is 145 units in Glastonbury, Montage, 144 units in Rocky Hill, and Altera, also 144 units in Rocky Hill. Our expertise, as I've described before, your commission, is in building modern rental communities that are highly amenitized. Our communities are Class A, and we think they're truly best in class. We are privately held company that has been building for 66 years, since 1957. One major feature that differentiates us from some other developers is that we are generational holders, which means that we do not build with the intention of selling a community, and we very rarely sell. Long-term ownership provides your municipality with more stable management, more constant contact, long-term curb appeal, and we think better quality design and construction because we're owning for generations. With respect to the design and development objectives, we're excited to have the opportunity to again develop here at Evergreen Walk. We continue to regard Evergreen Walk as the premier lifestyle center in the greater Hartford submarket, if not the entire state, and believe that a new residential community, combined with the recent opening of Costco and the planned opening of Whole Foods, will further enhance Evergreen Walk's position in the post-COVID marketplace. As both Peter and Jim articulated, our objective here is to create a new residential community that is distinct from Tempo. Although Tempo has been and remains very successful, we intentionally are not building a so-called Tempo 2. Our goal with this residential community is to serve the general welfare of the town of South Windsor, providing new housing type, and new housing types, plural really, not currently available in the submarket, giving residents another choice for their home. We want to create a community which complements the neighborhood of the site while at the same time satisfying an unmet need for housing in the town. We've charged our design team with the task of creating aesthetically pleasing community that blends into the architecture of the surrounding area. In so doing, we believe we have created the physical appearance of the community that complements the scale and the architectural style of the adjacent buildings on unit 7B. As Peter and Jim mentioned, Tempo offers exclusively three-story walk-up buildings, most of which are 24 units, and we actually have a 12-unit building there as well, but they're all walk-up buildings with common interior hallways. In contemplating the design of a residential community on 7C, a primary goal was to introduce new housing opportunities from Tempo and from the other housing opportunities at Evergreen Walk. With respect to the land plan that's before you, we've slightly modified the land plan since our last appearance before your commission. As has been noted, we've done so in two notable ways. First, we moved the four-story building away from the detention basin for land planning reasons, which Jim Cassidy has articulated. This relocation accomplishes two primary objectives. It addresses the neighbors' concerns by moving those buildings farther away from the nearest single-family homes. And we think the revised orientation provides a nicer transition to the three-story buildings on unit 7B by having complementary massing. It also diminishes the appearance formerly created of having a so-called wall at the rear of the site in front of the detention basins. Second, as has been mentioned, we eliminated the 12-unit walk-up building, which is the same type of building that we built on unit 7B in either a format of 12 or 24 units each. We made this change to provide more units that are attractive to renters who are older and or have needs for handicapped accessibility or adaptability, because the 12-unit building was a walk-up building. The new 37-unit building is an elevator building. In order to stay at 165 units, we reduced the number of the cottage-style units from 115 to 90. So we still wind up with 165 units, but now we have 75 of those units being in elevator buildings that are handicapped adaptable and can all be handicapped accessible because of the elevator. In order to fulfill that goal, the majority of our residential units, as has been mentioned, are in the so-called cottage-style buildings that are shown before you right now. There are eight 10-unit buildings, two 5-unit buildings. The cottage-style dwelling units allow residents to have their own front entry that is not on a common interior hallway and a direct entry to their own individual garage. So these are individual garages, these are not large garages, they're individual garages, they're not garages that are 10 garages with open walls. You have, so you have your own separate garage. Unlike Tempo, the cottage-style living is not congregate form of living because there are no common interior hallways or common interior staircases. We think these are the so-called next generation of rental dwelling units with distinctive styling not otherwise available in South Windsor or even in the nearby submarket. The direct-entry cottage-style units will appeal to a wide array of residents, including many who may already live in town and want to sell their single-family home and stay in town, but who would not want to rent in a congregate setting. In keeping with the goal of providing different housing opportunities at Evergreen Walk, we've also included the two four-story elevator buildings, one of which is 38 units, again, one of which is 37 units. Based on our development experience in other parts of Connecticut, notably in Shelton and Trumbull, where we have built these successfully before and own and operate them, there's clearly a demographic that will be very attracted to a building serviced by an elevator with a lavish lobby. Although it is actually a form of congregate living, it is a different form than is available at Tempo because of the inclusion of the elevator and the lobby. Our final design objective in all projects is to create a sense of place, for lack of a better word. Perspective renters who come to our community do so because of the housing opportunities that I've articulated, but also because they want to be part of a community and the stimulation that that provides. So building a sense of community or a sense of place is really critical. We have a demonstrated track record at Continental of meticulously designing these common elements where our residents can gather and socialize. The indoor amenities spaces, the outdoor amenities spaces are critical to the success of the community, and we've paid a lot of attention to them. Regarding the residential program, the 165 dwelling units are a mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms. The clubhouse will feature a clubroom, catering kitchen, and a state-of-the-art fitness center for use by our residents. Outdoors, there'll be a resort-quality pool, including cabanas and fire pits. Similar to what we have built throughout the state, these are first-class amenities, and they really get a lot of use at all of our, at all of our communities throughout the state. We pay a lot of attention, not just to designing them, but to operating them on a, on a day-to-day basis in a first-class basis in a first-class manner. As Jim mentioned, walkability and sustainability are also important to us. The proposed community is distinguished by its proximity to the promenade shops, which I've now learned is called the Shops at Evergreen Walk, and it's been renamed, and it's restaurants and shopping. The sidewalk network will make a direct connection to the existing sidewalks at, to the Shops at Evergreen Walk. And as part of our approval for the proposed community, as Jim has described, we'll be completing the Evergreen Walk Trail. Although it is in the development, the public has full access to this expansive trail. It'll be a great amenity, we think, for everyone. We are also committed to sustainability. Continental was the first developer in the state of Connecticut in 2013 to include EV car chargers at our residential communities. That was in Rocky Hill, and Jim has described the EV car charging and what we're providing here in accordance with your regulations. Likewise, at all of our Continental communities, we include a communal bike-share program where residents can use one of our bikes, which we maintain for their use and enjoyment on a daily basis. Access to bikes is obviously critical and important, and we also have bike racks dispersed throughout the community, as Jim has described. Regarding the design of both the cottage-style buildings and the four-story buildings, they are substantially the same as what we have presented before. We've worked closely with our architects to prepare what we think are dynamic elevations for both types of housing. The elevations attempt to utilize articulated facades, articulated roof lines to enhance the massing. Likewise, the elevations include a mix of different materials to create interest and to avoid the buildings looking monolithic. These materials include manufactured stone, lap siding, and board and batten siding. Although different certainly than Tempo, we believe we have succeeded in developing elevations that complement Tempo. In summary, we think that the mix of housing opportunities will ensure a dynamic, intergenerational community here on Unit 7C. An added inherent benefit, which Peter discussed, of the new residential community is that more residents will support the Shops at Evergreen Walk and contribute to its sustainability going forward, which is critical. Another important benefit, again, which Peter has described, is that 21 of the 165 dwelling units will be designated as affordable in accordance with the town's affordable housing plan. We're happy to include these residences and recognize their importance to the goals of the town and to the state in providing affordable housing opportunities. These 21 units will be located in the elevated 38-unit building and elevated 37-unit building, which will benefit the needs and objectives of affordable renters, because all of these units can be ADA-accessible due to the elevator in each building. We want to offer the greatest number of units to the affordable community that are accessible if needed, and in order to do so, we accomplish that by having the affordable units in buildings that have elevators. In summary, our objective again is to create another best-in-class, modern rental community, which the stakeholders of South Windsor and which your commission will be proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that complete your presentation?
That does.
Okay. Thank you. Then at this time, I will turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. This, I'll read the site report I did distribute to the commission ahead of time. So this is a request for a site plan approval for 165-unit residential development to be known as the Residence at Evergreen Walk, approximately 31.6 acres, known within Evergreen Walk 151 Buckland Road. This is known as Unit 7C. This applicant received general plan and special exception approval for these 165 housing units back in June of 2022. At that time, there were a couple approval conditions for the general plan, the affordability plan, and needed to be submitted in accordance with Section 4.215. And also at that time, the commission was working for sidewalk networks, bike racks, and connections to the existing sidewalk to be shown on the proposed site plan, and interconnection of the existing apartment shall be accommodated. The applicant, with this application, did submit the affordability plan, a draft for the commission's review. It does encompass all those requirements that we put in Section 2.24. Again, this is the first plan that's coming under our new regulations and the affordability section of the regulations. Some of the specifics with this approval was that the commission allowed for 12.7% total number of dwelling units to be affordable, which equated to 21 dwelling units, and this was reserved for families earning 80% or less of the area median income. Secondly, these 21 affordable units would be broken down into 13 two-bedroom units and eight one-bedroom units, and these units had to be deed-restricted for affordability for 40 years. So these things are all part of this document that was submitted. There's also very, if you really want to get into the specifics of it, there's all sorts of information on how people qualify for these things, a lot of details about the Affordable Housing Program that, you know, anybody that's interested in qualifying for one of these units would want to certainly read and understand. It gets into the process, so it's a really good document for us as staff to defer to people that are interested, because this again is kind of a new housing type that we haven't had much exposure to through our staff. So this document will be available. It will be put on the land records as well as being made a part of this approval. As indicated, we did kind of throw a curveball at the applicant, and we looked for renumbering of the buildings as part of the fire and police looking at the property. So some of the building numbering in the document may need to be tweaked, and again, that's part of why it's draft at this point. We'll finalize that with a final approval if the commission does approve this application. One of the other requirements from the general plan I just want to make note of is the applicant wanted to use vinyl clapboard siding. It's one of the materials which the commission allowed, provided that there was some other type of base material, the first 36 inches from the ground. I think we see that in the elevations. There's a stone material that's being used. That was part of the requirement and has been accommodated. To some other zoning requirements with this application, there is a 75-foot buffer along the residential boundary that's to the south. Those buffer plantings were put in with, by the Evergreen Walk developer previously. This plan does have a very specific landscaping plan with a lot of trees and the plants. I think as represented, there's about 200 street trees or ornamental trees being proposed, trying to give a, along your street corridor there. There's foundation plantings and also Evergreen plantings around the perimeter of the site. The site lighting will be residential in scale and nature, similar to what we see in Tempo 1, and will match that type of lighting level. Open space requirement, I think Mr. Cassidy explained it pretty well. We have a requirement of 750 square feet per unit. He calculated that out between the open areas, the trail system, the pool, the clubhouse. I think they've exceeded the open space requirement that we have in the regulations. Some of the other amenities, again, the trail system will be completed. This is about a 3500-foot trail system. They are providing two access points from some parking areas to the trail system. I think there was some discussion of maybe some signage being added just to make sure people can find the trail system okay within the development. They have provided, or are providing a bike-share program. Bike racks are shown throughout the site. They will be having sidewalk linkages going through Tempo and then up to the shops, and they do have that road connection. It will be an emergency road connection, but we do have the second connection into the Tempo development. As indicated, we have a requirement of 1.7 spaces of parking per unit. The applicant's providing 289 spaces when you take the garage, the space in front of the garage and other parking areas, so they do exceed our parking requirements. I think he's explained where the EV chargers are located around the site. We do require six to be installed ready, and 14 additional are required to be EV-ready, so they will be accommodating that requirement. Architecture and Design Review Committee did review this plan on September 7th. They did have a discussion about the large building, and there were some dormers that they requested the applicant to consider removing from the large building, which I believe is being accommodated. If that, okay. Other than that, they were very pleased with the designs as they were presented, and they forwarded a favorable recommendation. This application was in front of the Design Review, I'm sorry, in front of the Inland Wetlands Agency on July 5th. They did approve this application with a couple bond requirements. We have a 30,000 erosion sedimentation bond requirement, 50,000 stormwater structure bond requirement, and a 25,000 wetlands mitigation requirement. Public water and sewer are available. Water pollution control approval will be required, as well as approval from Connecticut Water for the water main extensions. If this application is approved, the Planning Department has no modifications to request. I did hear some mentioning of phasing tonight, so I guess I would just have one question for the applicant. If this is going to be a phased plan, or if with COs, or how you anticipate the project being CO'd at the end? Building by building? We'd like to see phasing lines if you're going to phase it.
It's not intended to be a phased plan. It's going to be a continuous development plan, and as buildings are completed, then we would seek COs for particular buildings. Correct?
Thank you. That's the planning comments.
Okay. Thank you. We'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my comments were, have been addressed. There's a couple of things that I think need to be cleaned up regarding the layout and the grading of the road network near the northern connection, the emergency connection to Tempo Apartments. It's a little steep and has some sharp curves, and I'll work with the engineer on that. The, again, some comments on the storm drainage, just to clear up some things. I want to make sure all the storm drainage and sanitary utilities are clearly labeled and visible. Want to make sure that the electric, gas, and phone or cable TV lines are shown on the plans. I didn't see those right now, and they may not have developed those yet, but they need to be shown on the final plans. The expected sanitary sewer flows from each building and the whole site need to be presented. The whole application needs presented to the Water Pollution Control Authority for their review and approval. And that's really it right now.
Okay. Jeff, may I ask, everything that you just said on your notes for 831, or should we include 926 comments also in the approval condition?
Yes.
Okay. So include 926 also, correct? Or, yes, okay. Thank you. So at this time, I'll just announce that we did receive, I believe, 15 letters in favor of this application. They have been given to the commissioners, and I believe all the commissioners have reviewed them, and we did receive one letter that had concerns, but I believe those concerns have been met with the moving of the larger buildings to the center of the complex. So at this point, I'm going to turn to commissioners for questions, comments, concerns. Commissioner Cavignero.
Thank you. So a year and a half ago, when we last phased this, I did have some questions and concerns, so I'll try not to rehash that, but I did have a few questions that I probably didn't ask at the time. So I just want to clarify with the report given to us on page seven and page eight for, let me get the right title of this, the Housing Affordability Plan on page seven and page eight. If I clarify that correctly, line nine on page seven and line nine on page eight, would that be the affordable, like, rent for one bedrooms and two bedrooms, or am I reading that incorrectly?
You're on page eight and nine?
Page seven and page eight. Point nine on both.
That would be, this is an example of how the rent is calculated, with the caveat to the commission that every year the AMI changes, and so these numbers will change. But this is as of the latest information that we had available to us. This is how the formula is created and then applied to a particular tenant.
All right. Thank you. It was very comprehensive. I just wanted to clarify that. So that was the affordable rent. I'm not sure if you've clarified it somewhere else in this 29-page report of the market rate rent. That would be for the one bedrooms and two-bedroom units. I'm not sure if there's, if you have a descriptive number so far, or if that's something that you'll come across later down the line. I'm just, I'm just curious.
I don't know that you even...
Yeah, we have, they'll be subject to market conditions by the time this community is built, which is probably two to two and a half years with site work, so. But there's fairly substantially more than the affordable rents.
Okay. I remember this was really the only question I asked a year and a half ago. I just wanted to see if there's progress on the numbers there. Outside of that, this is a question that we've usually asked applicants in the past, but I think all of us are concerned about trees and how many trees are impacted through a lot of these projects. I'm not sure if you guys have a number on hand of how many trees you guys are tearing down with this. I'm just curious. Are we going to say net positive or net negative? Because I know sometimes trees will be removed.
I mean, again, for the record, if you take a look at the, again, for the record, Jim Cassidy with Engineering for My House appears in Cassidy. If you take a look, we look at the site today, the entire development's already clear, other than some scrub shrub growth. There's no trees that are going to be cut. So again, we're planting about 204 canopy and evergreen trees and another thousand shrubs, so it's a net positive. No clearing is occurring as part of this development. It's already cleared.
Okay. Yeah, I was referring to the top right area because it looked like there was stuff there. But, no, thank you for that. I knew that trees are being planted. I just wanted to see like how much of a net positive there was, so that is good to hear. Outside of that, usually I'm curious about this in terms of security and I guess the lights in general. I guess I'll go one at a time here. So for the lights, or if there will be lights here, I assume, from my understanding and from how other apartment complexes have been in South Windsor, the lights that will be here, I assume they're on like a, not a motion sensor, but on a timer. So if it gets night out, will, will there be lights on at night? Or I'm just curious if there'll be lights here at all.
The system is on timers and obviously over the course of the year, as light changes and we go through daylight savings time, et cetera, those are adjusted. As Mr. Cassidy testified, all of the lights are dark sky compliant, down-directed lights. And I think what's fair to say is that Continental has a much greater interest in providing a very safe environment for its tenants, so that the lighting is provided to guide people to doorways, to light the parking areas where people park. And so there is always the need for security. The answer is there are lights provided so that tenants feel secure when they get out of their cars and walk to their units.
Of course, and I agree. I just wanted to clarify that, because I've driven through Tempo before, and again, the lights were on at night. And thank you for mentioning daylight savings, because, you know, you don't update that through daylight savings, and it'll mess up the process there. I guess I have one or two more questions as well. I've asked a couple other applicants before, again, in the range of security. Will there be security cameras here at all, or let's say ring doorbells that have cameras on them? I'm just curious on that as well.
That is not part of our plan at the moment.
I'm just talking long-term. I'm just curious.
No, not at the moment.
All right. Last but not least, on the Planning Department report on, or the site plan report here on point eight, it mentions the amenities, for example, the bike-share program and bike rack. It doesn't say bike rack in plural. I assume there's going to be more than one bike rack. Okay. I just want to make sure that was a typo. Yeah, those are all the questions I have, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vettiri.
Thank you. I had a question about the, there's supposed to be 21 affordable units, right? And you said they were going to be in buildings 10 and 11.
Correct.
Okay. Based on the drawing in front of me, if I add up building 10 and building 11, there's 20 units. Where's the 21st one go? Or is this the old numbering system versus the new, right?
I think you're on the old numbering system. I think you're on the old numbering system. What we're calling buildings 10 and 11 are a total of 75 units.
So you're actually referring, according to our drawing, you're referring to buildings 12 and 3? The four-story buildings?
Correct.
Okay. Because...
Sorry about that.
I know my math isn't great, but I just kept coming up with 21 and 20 didn't equal each other.
Our apologies.
The 90 or 92 garages, one said 90, and then I think the paperwork said 92.
I believe the number is 90.
90, okay. Are they, are some of those also included in the four-story buildings?
No.
Okay. So it's all the non-four-story building units have garages?
The cottage style, as we're calling it, obviously have a much lower profile, and each unit will have direct access to its garage.
Okay.
And no other unit will have access to that garage. So person coming home, pulls into the garage, closes the door, they're in their unit, and they have access directly to their unit.
Okay. And then as far as affordability goes, I know that initially, going through all the calculations that were in that form and everything, initially people have to verify what their income is so that they see that they qualify for it. Does that mean that every year they'll have to submit their tax return to you folks as well as to the government and everything?
Yes.
To continue to validate?
They have to continue to qualify as someone who meets the standards for the 80% AMI, whatever that is in that year. And obviously, it changes over time.
And it'll be against, as you said, it'll revise every year based on the latest...
Department of Housing issues that pretty religiously, and it's readily available online. People can, if they're concerned about where they stand, it's actually a little complicated to do it, but you can understand what the rates are. Yes.
Okay. And the one other question was, the 21 units of the 75, they're just randomly spaced all within? It's not like just one little corner?
Correct. The intention was to disperse them throughout the two buildings so that there's no cluster of those. And as I indicated in my comments, a person going in to look at a housing opportunity development unit, a HOD unit, versus a market unit, you will not be able to tell what kind of unit you're in. They will be identical.
Good. Good. That was it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Foley.
A quick question on C-19. Noticed on the plans, Jim, that it's a mowed path. I think, I would like to request that the pathways, the non-concrete sidewalks, that the pathways, if they could be like a process aggregate or something that's, we've already...
Right. So there's, the pathway, there's a series of woodchip paths. I think the main path throughout the Evergreen Walk development...
Correct. Which is proven to be, I'll say unsuccessful, I guess. Would it...
We were proposing to repair it or upgrade it to like, but we could talk about that, whether we use an alternate type of material.
Yeah, I would like to see these pathways be something that's...
It's also important to know, it's come to my attention...
What's that?
I'm sorry. It's come to my attention that the overall network system of paths has recently been turned over to the association. So whereas years ago it has not been maintained, now there's an association that will be maintaining it, and there's actually funding to maintain it. So whereas if you saw it was not maintained and in need of repair, now that the association owns it, it's going to be, it's going to be taken better care of. I think there's actually going to be a grand opening of the overall trail system in the near future. So it's going to be dressed up and signed for that. So right now it's woodchips. Again, we could consider it an alternate type of material.
I would absolutely shy away from the woodchips, just for accessibility, for footing purposes. Michelle, are we, I understand that, again, the management company's now maintaining the trail system, correct, at Evergreen?
That's correct. It's been turned over to the association. So before it was in the developer's control, and now it's in the association's control. So Karen Johnson had a conversation with me two weeks ago. They are doing, they have a budget now for the trail system on an annual basis to fund maintenance of it this year. They're going to be doing a grand opening in two, I believe, three weeks of the trail. They have a lot of new signage that they're putting up in the trail. So they've spent quite a bit of resources to try to upgrade the trail and get the trail to be properly signed and things. And this is going to be an annual basis kind of line item thing. I think it's not intended to be a handicap accessible trail throughout the whole thing. It's not, you know, it's through wetlands, and it's through different kinds of things. So it's, it is meant to be a nature trail more so than it is, you know, so I think how it's, Jeff Fulger was very involved in how it was initially put together with woodchips and whatever. I mean, there can be some discussions, but I think we would want to include the association in some of those discussions, since they're now maintaining the trail.
If I just might add, I...
He could speak into the microphone.
Mr. Lamson reminded me that the woodchip, just as Michelle just said, the woodchips became the material for the trail based on the wetlands permitting, because parts of the trail go through wetlands and upland review areas. And it was the Wetlands Commission that indicated that it wanted the woodchip base for the trail. So it would be, it's not within our ability to redo that. We don't control any part of that. The association now is really at the controls, and if there were to be a change in the material, I think they would have to go back to the Wetlands Agency to discuss that, at the very least.
Not satisfied.
Okay. Well, why don't you pass it off? I'm sure other commissioners might have some input.
All right. One other question. On your bike, bike share, those are only accessible to the residents of this facility? Like, somebody can't go down or swipe a credit card and take that bike for a cruise and whatnot? This is...
That's correct. You have to be a resident of the community to use one of the bikes.
Howard, could you just identify yourself when you come back?
I'm sorry. Howard Rappaport, Principal Longleaf Developers.
Okay. So...
Yes, you have to...
A kid can't go down and go, hey, I want to get to the other side of town, swipe it, and the bike ends up at the town hall.
No, it's not. You literally have to walk into the leasing and management office, be identified. We have waivers on file. We provide a helmet. So it's very controlled, as our insurance requires it to be.
And then one other thing, I know it was talked about back in, a while back, or wherever the date was, regarding vinyl siding for the first three feet. Is that, I'm looking at somebody's pictures, and I'm not seeing, I'm glad not to see it. I believe it looks like, is it stone?
That was the request, and that's, I believe, that we are complying with that.
Just to elaborate on Commissioner Foley's concern, on plans A1, A3, A5, the rear of the building does not show any three-foot stone.
We are agreeable to that as a condition, because that's in conformance with the revised zoning.
Plans need to be revised.
Plans need to be revised.
Okay. Thank you.
So it is going to be vinyl?
Above three feet.
Above, okay. All right. All right. It wasn't shown.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Let's see. The condition that you mentioned...
You just shut your mic.
I think these are all Mr. Cassidy's questions. The condition of 45 cottage units before we were required to build buildings 10 and 11, could you just explain your thinking there?
Sure. And if I misinterpreted the comment that was provided to us...
No, you actually, I think, nailed it, but now I'm interested in your response.
The idea would be, and we've had this, I've had this discussion in other communities where people are concerned that developers won't finish. The condition that I suggested is that up to 45 cottage-style units could be occupied with issued certificates of occupancy, but no more than that until buildings 10 and 11, my building's 10 and 11, not yours, buildings 10 and 11 are built and certificates of occupancy have been issued. So that the developer then can finish the other 45 cottage-style units, which are obviously of a different style. But it's a way we're offering to the commission an opportunity to make sure that the affordable units get built, and that those are done before the project is completed. That was the intention of that condition.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think, I think I can live with that, I guess. I'd be interested to hear if any of the other commissioners, I mean, my thought was that we ought to have some affordable units coming in as the site opens up, but I think we can live with that. Let's talk about electric vehicle chargers. First of all, I appreciate that you've gone to the trouble of working that out. However, it sounded to me like you're doing the install units next to the clubhouse and not next to the two buildings. In my, I mean, one of our requirements in our regulation, our zoning, are on page 286, now I can't find the, is that they be convenient.
Right now on the plan, we have it, so the installed spaces were near the clubhouse. The ready spaces were near the buildings, but we are more than willing to work with the commission and staff and break those up, to break them up and have installed spaces near each one of the buildings also.
I mean, my thinking is, as a resident of one of the four-story buildings, I would bring my electric vehicle, and I would hate to have to walk all the way across the campus to find a charger. So I'd rather to see you put the installed units next to the four-story buildings, maybe one up by the clubhouse, but let's get some down where people are actually living, because the idea is you're going to come home, you're going to plug your unit in, and either leave it overnight, or when it fills up, your neighbors are going to want you to move your vehicle so somebody else can use that unit. So it becomes less convenient, I think, to only have the installed units up by the clubhouse.
So if we're required to put in six installed at this point, my recommendation was to put two in each spot, and that one post services two outlets.
That would, that would work fine, yeah.
So as a conditional approval, we can incorporate that into the plan.
Yeah. Now, the other thing is, you have office workers in the clubhouse, but where's your...
Yes.
Okay. So they would benefit from that as well?
Correct.
Okay. Our only, the same question for the bikes, I'll ask, are only residents going to be able to use the EV chargers? Or at least somebody with a card from the resident?
That's our, that is our intention.
Yeah.
That's a little harder to enforce, very frankly, but that's our intention. Otherwise, otherwise we don't have enough EV car chargers if the general public is coming in.
I mean, again, my concept, and I suppose you have to work with the supplier of the equipment, is that the residents would have a card that, I mean, if they give it to a guest, well, there's not much you can do about that. But the idea would be that only those cards would work in that unit.
That's our, that's our intention.
Yeah, okay.
It's a little harder in practice, though, but yes.
I thought I saw mention of solar somewhere in the paperwork. I couldn't find it.
I believe so. Jim, you have the, well, there was a sustainability plan. You're, I believe you're referring to a sustainability plan that Mr. Cassidy developed during the, so we were not. So we're not showing solar yet at this stage. We will be looking at that when we develop our, our construction drawings and the orientation of the buildings, but we have not shown it yet.
I think right now, it's, in the current state of the regulations, it's difficult for you to put a solar array on a shared roof and then have the residents benefit. However, there was a bill that didn't make it through the Senate that would have fixed that. So sometime maybe within the next year, you'll have that option. Now, unfortunately, the buildings look very beautiful the way they are, so I don't know. I'm thinking almost solar tiles or something, but just keep in mind, you may be able to share the benefit of the solar with the residents at some point in the near future.
Understood, Commissioner.
The appliances, I'd like you, you told us that the appliances would be the same for the affordable units. I'd like that wording to be put in the affordable plan.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
To specifically state that.
The issue about capacity you were asking is just a case of, our regulations don't require you to have the same appliances, they require you to have the same capacity. So, you know, an eight cubic foot refrigerator, one in, you know, whatever size, but it's great that you're actually planning to use the same equipment, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've found it's easier during construction to have the exact same finishes, and it also helps the marketability to have the exact same finishes. So it feels like the right thing to do. So it's a, it's a double win.
I, I'll make a comment that you have no control over, but the idea that's, you know, I understand the idea that someone whose income goes up should probably vacate the affordable unit. However, there may not be any openings in your development for that person to move into at that time. So I don't know. How do you work that? I mean, you have this in other facilities?
Yeah, we, we do. We have a facility in Milford, it's 180 units. It doesn't happen that often, but it's, it's, not only is it theoretically possible, it will happen at some point. So if we can, we have 1,240 units across the state, and we would, of course, try to locate another, a market unit that would be suitable for, for the tenant who no longer qualifies for the affordable unit.
How much of a hit are they going to take on their rent typically? Is it going to go up by 100%, 50%?
It's typically going to go up by 50%.
Yeah.
There's a, quite a discrepancy between the affordable rents and the market rents.
I mean, it's another one of, there's a, if you read about things that are based on income, there's all these cliffs, you know, like, there's a cliff where you no longer require, qualify for what used to be called food stamps. There's another cliff associated with healthcare. So as people's income goes up, they earn another dollar and they lose all kinds of benefits.
Yeah.
It's nothing you can control.
It's a real challenge in the state, affordable housing.
That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter.
I just have one question, and I really appreciate this document, like Michelle said, to have all this in one place, especially kind of the interview process and the whole vetting of the applicant, which kind of made me want to ask a question, because we're humans, and, you know, we try to sometimes find shortcuts. If an applicant comes in who's single and qualifies, and then becomes married six months later, and they don't report that, is there any enforcement?
Well, if they don't, if they don't report it, there's no particular enforcement, but we have to certify to the town, I'm not sure who in the town, every year that we have gone through each of the steps that are delineated very carefully in the affordable housing plan. So it's an obligation that we take very seriously, because we realize our approval...
I don't know how you would enforce it, similar to subletting. Somebody qualifies for a two-bedroom, they got the lease, and they sublet the other bedroom. How do you, how do you, how do you...
Well, we have inspections, because subletting is...
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Subletting is... Oh, yeah, subletting is, is, it's not just subletting, now it's Airbnb, there's a whole host of things that have changed. It, it overtaxes our community, it overtaxes the, the units, it's, it's something we're very, very careful about. We look, we look for mail that's not addressed to our residents, there's a whole host of, of indicia that we look for.
Can't be easy, but we're all...
It's not, it's, it's not easy, but that's, that's part of the job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
All right, just a couple of questions. I'm looking at the plan you have up on the screen right there, and it looks like you have one sidewalk ring at the center, right, enveloping the apartment center in the middle?
Yeah, so there's a sidewalk...
Am I correct?
Yeah, there's a sidewalk loop that goes around the entire center and it's connected.
So you have a couple of buildings on the outskirts that don't really have sidewalks, am I correct?
Correct.
On the left-hand side, or is it dead end right there?
Yes.
Yeah, I, this town's making a concerted effort to sidewalk most of the town, and I always feel that the more people you have in a condensed area, the more problematic it becomes. I like to see sidewalks that protect all residents if they're going for a walk, I'm not sure if you see it, but the driving habits today are kind of inexcusable with a lot of people, so that is a concern of mine, not having sidewalks connecting every building. That's one concern I have, and I don't mean to harp on the trail system, but I realize there's some effort I'll be looking forth, but when Tempo came to us a few years ago, that was one of the selling points, is having that trail system. And I'm saying this from a personal standpoint, because I'm an avid runner, and that trail's maintained twice in this last calendar year. The grass was waist-high up in late June, early August. I wrote a couple of letters to the town, if you're gonna sell it and list it as an amenity, it needs to be maintained. And Evergreen Walk does a great job maintaining their property, but that trail system was inexcusable this year. There were downed trees since last October that were picked up in June, and by August first, you had a couple flood events this summer, and just from an engineering standpoint, all the water pitches out to those detention ponds at the bottom.
Correct.
It takes a beating in a good rainstorm, so they have these nice bridges and crossovers down there, but there's a lot of washouts from the weather events this year. But those are the things that are gonna tax your budget if there is an association looking ahead for maintaining this trail system. So this is something that really should be addressed, and I like the idea of it, and we get proposals that have these things in them, but they need to be maintained.
Sure, and obviously, we're using it as an amenity for our development, so that's one thing that we'll, we'll keep our eyes on to make sure it is maintained.
All right, but back to the sidewalks, it's just, that's an overall concern of the residents who would live there, and I...
So you're asking for...
Again, speeding efforts, I don't wanna see standalone buildings without some means of walking out of there, it's a lot of people. And if that's meant to be a user or pedestrian-friendly community, that they should be extended into those areas. And there is a, I'm not sure if this is the wrong slide, but you have a slide that showed a floral area with people walking, and I think there were two-story buildings, but didn't show any sidewalks at all.
Did you talk about the renderings?
Yeah, it was an elevation plan or like a... There you go. Yeah, so I didn't see any on that plan at all, but that may not be the right photo pertaining to this.
No, this was done prior to, this was done as we developed the building plans, not, not the site plan, so it doesn't show the sidewalks on it. So you, you're asking for a connection for that, that one building is down on the far southwest corner of the property?
All right, but...
Just the one building?
Yeah. That's what I'm looking at, or, yeah, it looks like there's, there might be two, one on the other end, but whatever's not serviced by it, I believe should have it. Again, it's just to protect those, it could be elderly, it could be young, could be kids.
I think it's, you know, for a connection to that building or something.
Yeah, you're a lot of people in an area like that, I'm just afraid of somebody getting taken out.
Sure, it's, we're talking to Michelle here, and it's something I think we can work with the staff on, some small connection down in that location.
All right, but thank you, only comments I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carey?
I just, I just have one question. I know last year, we didn't really have any snow, but in the event that we have a more normal winter and we have snow, where are we gonna put it? Like, do you have enough room to put it?
So this is set up more like a, a normal residential subdivision, where you have a perimeter road, and you'd have embankments around the perimeter. You have driveways that come off that perimeter road, so you obviously gotta shovel out the driveway, snow goes off the east side of the driveway. This isn't like a normal multifamily development where we have several tiers of parking that you start to eat up parking spaces with snow piled in, in those parking lots. Everything's around the perimeter, so all the snow gets stored around the perimeter of that road system, just like any other regular residential subdivision. We don't wanna lose parking spaces. If it becomes an issue where some of the parking spaces that are around that perimeter or in the driveways do get taken up, then we would have to remove the excess snow.
Okay. All right, I got a few questions around here, and my first is Plan C4. There's a round island near, if you wanna call it the entrance to the complex, and there's two-way traffic around part of it, and there's one-way traffic around the other part. And I'm wondering what the thinking is behind that?
So the main drive aisles, so this drive aisle here would be two ways. There would be one way from this point back into this driveway that's two-way. My thought process is keep it wide enough, twofold, number one, that if a vehicle gets in there, it needs to...
You're trailing off again on me.
Sorry. Two, two parts. If there's a vehicle that needs to get around, that's in the development, and it's not supposed to be there, they have a way to turn around and get out. Also, if someone wants to get dropped off to the clubhouse area, there is an area to pull off to the side of the curb, leaving ample area to someone to pass. So the thought is, again, that the traffic around this portion would be one-way, but if you were to take away this portion here, we'll call it the drop-off area, these would be two-way driveways, this driveway here, and then this driveway here would be a two-way driveway. I didn't think it was a good idea to have access coming in the other direction through here, I thought it was a bit confusing. I tried to make these two radiuses here and here tight enough to kind of prohibit that from happening.
Okay, I would just possibly require, if you haven't already put signage in there...
Sure.
...to address that. I don't think there will be arrows going around on the pavement, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there would need to be adequate signage there, so there's no issues or accidents. Okay. That one I don't need to ask. To be, Commissioner Foley had mentioned about the grass on the trail, and part of it is wood chips and part of it is grass, I believe in the southwest corner.
Down here.
Part of it's mowed. How would people know that that's part of the path if it's mowed grass instead of...
So, so let me clarify this, so there's a mowed path presently on the top of the, of the detention basin berm. As part of what we're doing, we're gonna need to modify the overall trail system. As part of that, we would be improving that section of the pathway that's presently mowed into a wood chip path.
Would it still be mowed, or...
No, it would be wood chips.
Okay, so it would be similar material, okay.
Yeah, similar material.
Okay, good.
One thing to consider with that, too, is it's not just what comes up from your feet, but it closes in on each side of the trail. Somebody has to weed whack it at least a couple times a year or four times a year, because it comes in from the sides, so it's not just underfoot, but the...
Right, and so now that we, you know, once we get in and we can maintain the overall property, that's part of, you know, maintenance of the property, we can, you know, keep those sides clear.
Is it, Michelle, is it possible to get a maintenance schedule from the association on how they're planning on maintaining it? Okay, thank you.
Yes, I've requested that from Karen Wagner's...
Okay, thank you.
Eric Karen Johnson.
The space in front of the garage is actually counted as a space.
Correct.
And tenants are allowed to park there even though it, it's not gonna be lined or anything, it's just gonna be a space in front of the garage. Connectability between the project sidewalks and Tempo sidewalks, I noticed those aren't connected.
So Tempo sidewalks stop here right now?
Where?
Can, can you see my cursor?
Yeah, and I'm...
So we're extending off the sidewalks all the way down this edge of the roadway, and I crosswalk into the loop system.
Right, but only on the roadway, you're not doing connectability between the complex, correct? You're not, there's a sidewalk there from Tempo that comes and it stops maybe twelve feet away from your sidewalk, right there.
Yeah, we're connecting to that sidewalk.
You are connecting that?
We're connecting, yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that on the plans.
Yeah. The sidewalk presently ends just past the west side of the driveway.
Okay, come on up here for me if you would. Right here, right here, there's about twelve feet that there's no connection, and I'm wondering...
Oh, I see, you're so...
Okay. If you could go back to the podium and...
If I could point to this, the, so you're asking for a connection where the sidewalk ends in, in front of the, well, this, this building here in Tempo, to extend all the way out to the, the sidewalk, going the edge of the roadway. So I guess, again, that's something we can look at with, with staff, see if there's a way to make that connection.
Okay.
I don't wanna say this, we can run it straight out, I don't know if grade-wise, if it works, if there's gonna be any requires with...
Well, I'm wondering if it wasn't done because of grading, I know there is a, a grading difference height-wise, I believe, there?
Yeah.
But if it can be done, I'd like it to be done. Okay. I'm wondering how the gutters drain the roof near the garages, such as, say, what is it? The old Building Six near where Commissioner LeBlanc wanted sidewalks.
So when we get into final designs of all the buildings, we'll get into the actual locations of downspouts as part of those buildings.
Right, are they gonna be draining into an underwater system?
So some of them are already noted as draining to an underwater system, underground system, and some of them are noted as connecting to the catch basin that's out front. But the intention is that we typically connect them back to a system. We sell them, let them discharge directly to the grade.
Right, 'cause I'm envisioning a lot of these units where you have multiple garages, and the roofs come down in valleys...
Yeah.
And the gutters wrap around, there's only gonna be maybe two downspouts or whatever, and that's a lot of water coming off that could create ice and other issues. Okay, thank you. How many units are designed handicap accessible, or are you only, I forget what the other term is for the handicap units?
So the way it works, it's, the, there's two different types of units here. One is the cottage-style units, one is the, in the thirty-seven and thirty-eight unit building. So I'll take the cottage-style units to start with.
Okay.
The cottage-style units, the first-floor units are handicapped adaptable, or that can be made handicapped adaptable. The garage is not handicapped adaptable because it's too narrow, so the, the adaptability for someone who would, may wanna rent a cottage-style unit who has that need, according to the code, is that they use the space in the driveway.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Again, so that's only the first-floor units.
Yep.
All units in the thirty-seven and thirty-eight unit building are handicapped adaptable because of the elevator, and there's a further requirement that on the first day that we open the entire complex, that ten percent of the units be accessible, meaning have the lower countertops, have grab bars, so we would locate those ten percent, subject to our code interpretation, in all likelihood, in the thirty-seven and thirty-eight unit building. So we'll have seventeen units that are handicapped accessible, which are called type A units on, at, at opening of the, of the whole community.
Okay, so to answer that, my question, the answer would be ten percent of the units are handicapped accessible?
Accessible, that's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. What's the size of the elevator?
Um...
Can you fit a couch in it? Or has everybody gotta get sectional furniture?
No, people fit couches in there. Yeah, furniture goes up in the elevators. I'm asking one of our leasing agents.
Yeah, I hear an echo, but, so you don't know the specific size of the elevator?
I don't know, I could, I could, we could adjourn for a few minutes and I could get that size.
Okay, I, I'm curious, so if you could provide it in the future...
Sure.
I'm not looking to hold up the application, I just...
Sure.
One answer. Thank you. I'll just mention it again, the rear, just the rear elevations on the cottage-style units for Plans A1, A3, and A5 do not show the knee wall being stoned, so...
And we're gonna correct that.
Yep, okay. Snow clearing, I've got a note here, I, I'm also concerned about the snowstorms and where the snow is gonna be put, because some of the areas that it looks like snow might go are, are the stormwater basins, and I don't know if there's a requirement that snow can't be kept in a rain garden, Jeff, do you?
I don't think there's any requirement. It may impact the rain garden depending on the plants that are in there, but, you know, if you get a heavy rainstorm, your shrubs and your plants around your house are gonna get buried in snow, it's similar to that. I see rain gardens at the end of driveways, I imagine they will push snow off the driveway into them.
Okay. Yeah, and let me just look at the other plan for the detention basin, it's actually pretty far away from, oh, actually... Okay, we might have to identify some places on the plan where signs would have to go up, where you can't deposit snow because of the water quality conditions. Let's see, I saw a retaining wall on the print.
Correct.
I didn't see the height of the fence that's on top of that retaining wall.
If the wall's over three feet in height, you'd have to have a four-foot-high fence on top of it.
Okay. And I think one of those areas was an area where I didn't think you could deposit snow because of the, the stormwater.
So you're referring to like...
So you're referring to like this area here where the parking lot gets closed? Yeah, so there would be a fence on top of that wall in that section there.
Okay. And, well, there's only a little bit of parking lot that's over there. So you would deposit the snow in, say, the, I'm guessing, the west side of, right there? Okay.
So a large green area there.
Okay.
We could, we, you know, again, I can add a, a snow storage area around the whole perimeter of this and any other place, uh, that's acceptable, uh, to deposit snow. So it's on the records.
You got to work on that projection for me, please.
I know, I'm a soft talker. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Um, bike racks.
Correct.
Uh, I heard mentioned two bike racks, and they were both in the southern-
No, so there's, there's the one that's right in this location here. This is the bike share area. And then because this is like the head of the trail system from our development, there's another bike rack down here.
Okay, and what if some kids come over and they want to visit somebody in the northern end of the, uh, units? Where would they park their bike?
Uh, in the cottage style units?
Yeah.
Probably, um, either outside in the garage or in the garage area.
So would there be a bike rack that they can lock it to, or? What I'm thinking is we need our bike rack in the northern end somewhere.
So you're talking about in, up near these buildings?
Um, is that a cottage style unit?
This is cottage style here.
Oh, okay, so-
It's, it's not a big deal. We can add additional bike racks on the northern end of the project.
Okay.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Um, what's the largest truck that can maneuver safely through the complex?
So it's designed to handle a SU 30, single unit 30, um-
SU 30?
A single unit 30, 30-foot wheelbase.
Okay.
What's that?
Now define that for me, please.
It's, it's your typical box truck with a wheelbase of, from the front wheels to the rear wheels of 30 feet. It'd be your typical delivery van for furniture that'd be coming through the site.
So that sounds hypothetically like a 26-foot box Penske truck?
Uh, more of a, no, yeah, yes. Uh, uh, yes, a 26-foot, yes, correct.
Okay. Um, have there been any concerns about fire appers, apparatus? Michelle, what's the largest fire truck that can make it through here?
I, I know, I know the fire marshal hasn't expressed any concern about it, so he's satisfied that they can get through there. I, I don't know exactly.
Usually if I can get SU 30 through, I can get a fire truck through. Uh, we can work with the fire marshal. If you give the, give us the information on any particular vehicle, we can run a turning maneuver for it through the site, but I'm confident we can get it through the site.
Has the fire marshal reviewed?
Yeah, I think he may have reviewed it with the general plan and special exception specifically. Um, he has reviewed the plans and has not told me of any concerns related to that.
The only area I'd say that we had in, uh, Jeff Folger had mentioned was this one intersection up here. Uh, we have this little S curve here, uh, so it was a little bit difficult. Uh, that's something I've actually gone back and revisited, uh, and I was able to actually flatten out the curve and get rid of the S. Uh, so that was the only area that was really tight. Uh, I just need to sit back now with Jeff and go over what I came up with for a layout and how I got the grades to work in that particular area to make the grades last.
Okay.
But.
I, eh, do we require like a, a letter from the fire marshal with any application or?
No, but he was the one that required the interconnection early on. Walter did, the fire marshal. So I, he's reviewed the plans. He usually gives me some kind of written comment. He didn't this time, but, um, it's usually, but he has had the plans.
I, I would like to maybe see something on file, just-
Okay.
So we don't end up with the same issue, like, um, there was a, a different, uh, complex where the road was okayed for, uh, certain size, uh, apparatus, equipment, whatever, and then five years later, it wasn't. And it's got to be torn up and redone.
So the one thing I, I will also point out is, uh, if you take a look at the existing Tempo development.
Yep.
If a piece of fire apparatus has gone through that existing development, I really don't have any radiuses or corners any tighter than are in that existing development, in this development. Uh, any areas where I felt that they were tight and was an issue, such as this intersection here, you can see a little section of pavers in the center of it. I made that specifically wider, uh, so a larger piece of apparatus could maneuver, uh, and not have any problems with the corner.
Okay.
But again, if you can go, go all the way through this Tempo development, they can easily get through this new development.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure our bases are covered. Uh, is there any time limit on the EV spaces? I know some other complexes, I've seen signs in, uh, like a four-hour limit or some, to that effect for the public. So I'm, I'm, it's a curiosity thing. It's-
Yeah, no, we have, um, we have EV car chargers at Tempo and there, we have signs. There's a two-hour limit.
Okay.
Yeah, so we need turnover to occur, of course.
How, is that generated by complaints to the office or, I'm just curious?
I'm going to get you an actual answer.
Yeah, you can have that person come up and identify themselves too.
I'm Jessica Cardona, and I manage the property over at Tempo Evergreen Walk. Um, currently we do rely on the community, um, for information. Uh, we are also located right next to the EV charging station, so it is convenient where the office can notice that a car's been there for a significant amount of time and contact the appropriate resident to have them then move their vehicle.
Okay. Uh, how many EV charging stations do you have over Ever, uh, Tempo?
Currently we have one, um, and each station does supply two vehicles.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Uh, all right, A, here's 10. Lighting plan versus trees. As, when you design, uh, do you have like an overlying, um, software to, um, show where your trees are versus where your lights are?
To show the conflict in the two?
Yeah.
Do I have a, a software that shows that?
Yeah.
No, um, I mean, I could have-
Like there's software where you have ducts and you have plumbing and, you know, air ducts and this kind of-
No, but I, I can work with our lighting vendor to make sure he's, situates the light so it's not in conflict with the tree and is not, lighting distribution is not cut off by a tree.
Okay, because, um, I looked at a few different places and I saw conflicts. And I hate to see lights inside of trees.
Agree. I agree 100%.
And, uh, I looked and saw like a half a dozen, you know, and just looking at it for 10, 15 minutes. Uh, and, um, that island where we were talking about for the directional.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if you have that in a blow up, but there's two trees out on the main islands there. And right there on the left.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I know you're trying to blow it up. That's great. Do, 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 do.
Sorry.
Do, do, do. Sorry.
Try it this way. Nope.
There it is. Uh, right where, okay, um, just, yeah, right, that tree, there's a light in it, and the tree on the opposite end, there's a light in it. And also the tree right at the bottom below that, right? That one, there's a light in it. Um, so I, I, I would appreciate, eh, and just my thinking, and I know you're doing foot candles and everything. You're trying to do even lighting and, uh, that's all admirable. Just hypothetically, uh, you've got lighting, uh, like other lights across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's like three of them in that lower parking lot. Um, there's some to the left of that bottom tree that we were just looking at. And the three trees that are between those two trees that have lights in them, um, if you were to remove the center tree and put a light out there, I, with all the other lighting around in the area, uh, I think that might be adequate. But, um, again, I, I know you're talking safety for foot candles and everything else.
Right.
But I, I'd appreciate if the-
Sure, again, that's something we can work with staff on. We can, you know, have them superimpose the tree locations and shift lights around if necessary.
Okay, great. Yeah, and the building numbers, we all know that. Uh, 11? Timeline of the project. What's the overall timeline for the build out? Do you have a, a timeline or no?
Um, from the time we break ground, it's, it's about a two and a, two to two and a half year period. About a 24 to 30 month period.
24 to 30 month period?
Yeah, so it's about, usually about nine months, two year of site work and a, a year of building usually and-
Okay, so hypothetically, the timeline or your estimate, when you start, say, the 45 units, um, that, uh, Attorney Alter was talking about, what's the timeline between the start of those units and the start of the affordable units? Are we talking a year?
No, no, we're talking in all likelihood, uh, three months.
Three months?
Yeah.
Okay, it's so, and of course, you're talking site work first, so that's, say, three, four months of site work?
Or more, probably more like-
Site work will be ongoing, correct?
It, it's ongoing, but we, we, first we put the whole site on grade and we put in the utilities, but the site work is ongoing. So, um, if you want to, Jim, I don't know if you want to pull up the, the site plan? So it, it will take longer to build the 38-unit four-story building than it will to build a 10-unit two-story building.
Granted.
Yeah.
Um, I would just like to see the time that we start the affordable units.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as soon as possible to the time, like, how many, um, you're talking 45 units, that's, uh, say, four buildings that you would build before you would start one of the affordable units?
In theory, under the condition that Attorney Alter has described. Um, but we don't wait till we finish the building. We will, we will, we start buildings every, say, every month or so. Um, so we, we'll prep it, the site, we will start, the first thing we'll build is the, uh, is the community building because we lease out of there. In all likelihood, we will start with one of the 37 or 38 unit buildings because we need to finish that area in there, or at least part of it, because they're so close to the clubhouse.
Right.
So the building that's, uh, the page, uh, northwest, I'm not saying that it is northwest.
Yep.
That will likely be built at the same time that we build the, the clubhouse and that we build the first, uh, five or 10 unit building.
Okay. So, um, would you have a problem with putting that as an approval condition or?
No, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Uh, let's see, 11, 12, next. Um, Michelle, is there a requirement that they submit to the town, uh, the information that they submit to HUD or whatever, um, authority, they send their compliance?
Um, it seems like it's an annual reporting that takes place.
So that would go to the town also?
Correct, yes.
And if somebody wanted, they could, uh, review that under freedom of information or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. 13, let's see. Okay, that's, that was included in the plan. Um, I'm just wondering why the northeast peninsula, which is open space, was, um, not shown on the plans anywhere? No disruptions or what?
The piece that's out to the right-
The piece in the top right corner, uh, it doesn't show up on any of the plans I received.
You're talking about this piece in here?
Yeah.
This piece, yeah, because nothing was happening in that area. And, you know, unfortunately, to create another sheet for nothing happening in that area, um, didn't, didn't make a lot of sense.
Okay.
The other idea was to reduce the scale of the plans, but-
So is there any wetlands there? Did wetlands see that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Okay, and that one was again, the building numbers. Okay, um, I noticed a lot of open spaces for your tenants. Is there anything in your documentation that says, okay, uh, if somebody wants to go out and, uh, throw a football around, this is your dedicated area that you can do this in without getting yelled at by the tenants who live, uh, in the adjacent buildings?
Hello again. Um, so over at Tempo currently, there isn't really a designated space for park play. We do, um, inform residents and prospective residents to, that, you know, six minutes is Never's Park, and that's an area where there's open fields. South Windsor's full of fields. And so we, we kind of push our residents and market South Windsor's parks. Um, if there are balls and things being played inside, um, like the town green area, um, we are notified about it, and if it's disruptive to anyone, then we do have to address it.
Okay.
In common areas, like inside buildings or anything, it's not permitted.
Pardon me?
In common areas or inside buildings, like ball play in the hallway or any rough housing or things like that, it's not permitted. That's, that's strictly like not.
Okay, but a common area could be green grass also. So you, are you saying there, you can't go out and toss a football in a green grass area?
Um, not in the center green.
Um, I'm not good with that.
There really isn't a designated park area.
Pardon me?
There isn't a designated park area, like where they can play with a ball and not potentially cause risk to vehicles or other things like that.
Are you saying you have a designated park area in the complex?
We don't have a designated park area.
Okay, you need one. If you're going to be dedicating area for open space and there's nothing around there and you can bring up the map again and we can look at it, you need a designated area where somebody can throw a football. And you could put a sign out there, whatever.
So again-
Look at that north corner there, north, or north corner, northwest corner. What's all that nice green area?
Wetlands.
That's wetland? That's wetlands?
Yeah, there's wetlands, so the sewer, beyond the sewer line, there, there's wetlands, yes. What's that?
Yeah, show me some topo or something.
So, again, this is a sewer line here, so the, the green area is non-wetlands, but the.
What's that nice green area to the east of that?
This area here?
Yeah.
So, it's non-wetlands, it's presently wooded. We weren't proposing to cut it. It's non-wetlands.
Okay.
It, it's, it's wooded. It's the other side of sewer line.
Oh, that is wooded, okay. I remember when Commissioner Cavagnaro was looking for the trees.
Right, and I'll also note that as part of the overall development, as part of the, the Army Corps and D permitting on the project.
Mm-hmm.
There's limits of areas that can be cleared, so that area cannot be cleared. Um.
My issue is, there's gonna be kids living here and kids need someplace to do something. If they don't have it, they're gonna create havoc.
Mm-hmm.
It's their nature, and just by having a designated park in town doesn't mean they can get to it. So, uh, you should consider that.
There, again, there's, along the edge of that walking trail between the parking area at this far end, there is a, a decent-sized flat area. Is that an area we could consider? Yeah. I mean, if, if you're looking for a smaller, a couple of kids to go out and throw a ball, they're not gonna hold, carry a full football game on in this area. But to go play catch or something like that.
Yeah.
We do have that area, uh, that's to the edge of this parking lot.
Okay, well, that's, that's something.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
There is, you know, I don't know what you're doing in the backyard of it.
I would too, um.
Yeah, we, we can show this as an area for.
I, I would appreciate if, as an approval condition, the applicant could show some common areas that it's safe for kids or defined as an, an area where kids.
We'll, we'll take a look at the topography and where we have open areas and.
Okay, thank you.
Identify some common areas.
Uh, guess what? I think I ran out of questions. Okay, commissioners, did anybody have any, Commissioner Carey?
So, as we're talking about children, where's the bus coming?
Good a, good question. For the microphone, please.
So, currently at the Tempo development, there is a, a structure with a bus stop here. Let me go, let me go to a site photo.
Okay, that's Tempo.
So, I mean, I guess we can consider something near the, the circle turnaround.
Can the, of school bus make a turn in there?
School bus can make a maneuver around that circle.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it may be up to the school to decide whether or not they'll require a sep- separate stop there or if they'll have them walk to the other.
Yeah.
They'll have to consult the school about that.
Okay, so the applicant will work with, uh, the South Windsor Board of Ed in locating a bus stop that's, uh, adequately serves the, um, residents. Um, commissioners, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, um, I thought I heard, uh, Mr. Cassidy mention bikes on this trail system, making a bike rack near the trail system. But the trail system, I don't think is designed for any kind of bikes.
Well, people could ride to their.
Yeah, so what I identified is we have a bike rack down at the head of the trail system. So, if someone is up riding their bike, wants to get on the trail system, they got a place they could stop, lock up their bike. I didn't say they're going on. Oh, okay, great, that's good. Um. I guess the, just to get back to the, um, fire equipment, um, we now have a four-story building, so we need to be able to get a ladder truck in. Um, we're sure we can get a ladder truck in everywhere here? Yes, okay, thank you.
Ladder truck's not the one with the tightest turning radius.
Can't hear you, Jeff.
The ladder truck doesn't have.
It doesn't what?
Other trucks.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
I just have a brief note, uh, with regard to the fifteen letters that were received in favor. Uh, letters number one through nine of those were distributed to the full commission and the one letter with concerns about the application was distributed. Numbers ten through fifteen in favor were received, uh, since the packets went out. Uh, the chair and Commissioner Wagner have them, uh, if those need to be read into the record, but the rest of the commission does not.
Okay, the rest of the commission does not, so those should, um. They, they were, they were all in favor and they were all similar letters, um.
I'd be happy to waive the reading.
Okay.
This is not a public hearing, so I.
Correct.
So, I don't think it's.
Okay, so you're waiving the reading of those letters. We appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, just noted that those letters were all, uh, similar in favor. Um, and a lot of them came from Tempo residents. Okay, thank you, Josh. Um, anything else? Um, if, Michelle, are we comfortable with a motion or, usually will, um.
I have written down what I think you want for additional approval conditions. I'd be glad to read those for the record if you want those.
Yeah.
The ones that we've talked about as approval conditions?
Was there anything brought up tonight that we need to follow up on prior to possibly approving or?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Foley, what? Yeah, yep, okay, um. Commissioner Kavigna?
Yes, thank you. Um, a couple of minutes ago, we were talking about a designated park or, or park space area, um, even though I think.
Recreational area possibly.
Yeah, no, I, I was looking at the map and I was really trying to find some ways we can wiggle that in there. Um, and, and I'm not sure if we're close to the threshold of, like, minimum amount of parking. But I'm looking at, um, buildings, yeah, building seven and building nine, in between, there are eight parking spots. I'm not sure if it's possible to eliminate that and have a somewhat small to medium-sized park area designated for that. Um, I'm not sure if that hits, like, the minimum requirement, but I, I was looking throughout here, trying to find some space to eliminate if it's possible to have a designated park area.
I, I, if I, if I might, um, one of the. I'm not gonna say necessity, because that's too strong a word. One of the desirable aspects of a project like this is to have some additional parking proximate to various units so that when you have guests, they can park fairly close to where they're visiting. If we start to eat away at those, um, I, I think that does a disservice to the overall function of the, of the project. I would prefer to have Mr. Cassidy work with staff and, and look at, for example, that, that green area at the end of, uh, I guess that's a southwest corner, and see if something can be created in that way.
Yep.
Um, I, 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 I would be very reluctant to surrender those kinds of guest parking spaces.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up as an option to consider.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we're always balancing.
Yep.
Needs and we are still a car-driven society, so.
Okay. Uh, okay, well, we're getting short on time. Commissioner Wagner?
Okay, I'd like to move to approve, uh, application twenty-three, twenty-seven P, the residences at Evergreen Walk. Um, let's see, most of these are standard conditions. Number three, this application is subject to conditions of approval of the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission, including bonds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to ensure compliance with erosion and sediment control measures, and fifty thousand dollars to ensure establishment of a stormwater system, and twenty-five thousand dollars to ensure proper installation, follow-up inspection and maintenance of mitigation me- measures. Condition four, a landscape bond in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars is required and must be submitted prior to the issuance of a s- certificate of occupancy if work is not completed.
Of standard conditions.
These are all standard conditions through condition twelve.
Four through two.
Yeah, one through twelve.
Okay.
Uh, condition thirteen, engineering comments dated, uh, eight thirty-one, twenty-three and nine twenty-six, twenty-three must be incorporated into the final plans. An executed cop, number fourteen, an executed copy of affordability plan shall be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit. Um, I tried to write some conditions down, but maybe, um, Mrs. Leif could.
Yes, so, um, I have no greater than forty-five certificate of occupancies shall be issued for the cottage units until certificate of occupancies for the buildings with the, the four-story buildings three and twelve are issued. Um, two installed EV chargers, active EV chargers to be located at the three different locations. A plan identifying affordable units to be submitted to illustrate the distribution of the affordable units throughout the two, four-story buildings. The affordability plan documents shall indicate the appliances and the affordable units will be the same as all other units. Um, a sidewalk connection shall be added to connect the building in the southwest area of the site, uh, to work with staff on that sidewalk connection. We're looking for additional signage at the entrance to indicate the traffic flow. The final path, it shall be a woodchip path, uh, not mowed as shown on the plans. The rear architectural plans shall show a thirty-six inch base of fieldstone or other material, and that's on sheets A-one, A-three and A-five. We're gonna have the fire marshal review the layout for all fire vehicles to ensure their ability to get around the site. Uh, the thirty-eight unit building shall be started at the same time as the clubhouse and the original, um, building permits for the, um, other buildings. First building shall be started at the same time. A residential building, okay. So, the, the thirty-eight residential building shall be the first residential building applied for, uh, the clubhouse may be preceded to that. Um, a common area for children to play shall be designated on the, the plans. And the applicant will work with the Board of Ed to find a school bus stop location if required.
All right, thank you. That's all the ones I had made a note of, and many more.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Uh, just under discussion, um, I had a concern with one of them that you had said, I think it was like the third one.
About the appliances being the same?
No, no, it was before that.
So, we were looking at, uh, having a plan showing the distribution of the affordable units. Um, the sidewalk connection being made to the building to the south. You, additional signage you were looking for at the traffic, for traffic, no?
Nope.
Woodchips?
No.
Rear elevation, architectural elevations?
Yeah, you had, um, stated A-one, A-three, A-five. Uh, it should also say, and any other.
Okay, sure.
Plans, um, that do not show.
Oh, I should say, all architectural plans show, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, um, the applicant will work with town staff to coordinate, uh, lights, conflicts versus trees. Okay. And, uh, that was part of the motion and part of the second?
It's all acceptable, yes.
Okay, great.
Accept.
Okay, uh, any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Uh. We have application eighteen dash forty-eight P, Berry Equipment. Uh, do we have somebody here to represent the applicant? Mr. DiMali?
Just put it on the record, if you want. You want a brevity?
Yeah.
Brevity's the word? Okay, we're gonna, let me.
Oh, sure.
While you're trying to get that on, I'll just go.
Okay.
Uh, sixteen oh eight, John Fitch Boulevard, former air gas building, uh, Abco, um, welding building. It was vacant for four years. Three years ago, this commission approved a renovation of the building for Berry Equipment.
Okay.
A construction equipment vendor, uh, and, uh, they've been building it over the last few years. Uh, it included a five thousand square foot addition in the back and one of the, uh, new landscaping and other improvements. Uh, one of the conditions, or what they requested was, uh, a display area out front for their heavy equipment. Uh, as they're building this, they invite us over and they're concerned that the area, as you come up to the building, uh, when you drive in and you go right up to the front of the building, closest part of the building to the driveway and to Route Five, is their entrance. They wanna keep the landscaping there nice, nice, aesthetically pleasing. Uh, they, um, wanna put in irrigation system, but the original plan that you approved had millings so the bulldozers and excavators and other big equipment that they sell could go across from the a- area storage in the back, across the driveway area and then on the millings and out to the, to area for display. They would not like to do that. There's plenty of room behind the building, uh, where they can put a driveway in, uh, Millings driveway to get access behind the building to the display area. Uh, that way, the area from basically the plane of the building, um, to the south would be only landscaping in the front, uh, where they have an irrigation system and, and just landscaping. That way, all the, all the, uh, equipment would come from the back and just access the display area and go to the rear. And there would be a, a gate also, uh, uh, a, a gate fence enclosure with, uh, privacy slats, um, in the, as it sets back it to be, uh, for, to, uh, screen the area to the rear, um, from public view, although you're really not gonna see much of it. They did a lot of landscaping along the northerly property line, particularly in the northwest corner. Uh, so they'd like to reduce it by four hundred square feet, what is, uh, current approved plan for the display area, scale it back to the north. Uh, but one thing that's there that was an issue with that, uh, even though they're scaling it back, is there is a, one Norway maple, which is, some of you may know as an invasive species. It's roughly twelve inches in caliber, I think, yeah, roughly twelve inch. Um, that's invasive species. We'd like to remove that and replace it with two, three and a half inch, uh, autumn blaze red maples, which are not invasive. Uh, so, two for one, uh, and they'd like to do that so it won't interfere with the equipment. Uh, so this would make for a cleaner site, more aesthetically pleasing site. Uh, so as everyone's entering the site, they see the landscaped area, uh, they're even going to, you know, the grass that's in front of the property line. They'll even shoot the water over into there to have it nice and green, uh, in the swale area in front. Uh, so they wanna do that, uh, and it'll, it'll make for a much better operationally, getting equipment to and from the display area, be from behind the building. Uh, so people won't see it coming and going and it won't disturb the front of the building, it won't disturb the front, disturb the front parking area. Uh, Glenn Martin's with me, who did the design for this, licensed landscape architect and project, senior project manager with our firm. Um, but we're just trying to keep it real brief, so we're available. brief, so we're available for any questions, if you may have those.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Leif.
Just the one comment I wanted to let you, the commission, be aware of is, at the time you did approve the outdoor storage, you did limit the height of any equipment to twelve feet, so that would again be still a limitation with any approved change of the location of the equipment. I do have some pictures of the front of the building that I'll pass around that were taken today. Didn't get a chance to see it.
And that area has not been finished, the landscaping? It's just, we're waiting for a decision from the commission before we finish that part of it.
Okay. I want to make the commission aware that the applicant did ask if this could be done with a change order. And I spoke to Commissioner Foley about it, and you have to understand this application process. First, when the applicant came in, they were going to be leaving some trees behind the building, and I went out just to check out the application because some of the trees that were supposed to stay behind the building were now gone. And then they came in, they did the proposal for the millings behind. When you look at the aerial of this project, originally, the whole back area was wooded. Everything, if you have this drawing in front of you, this drawing here, all this was wooded originally, and all of that was clear cut. That was all trees. And the one tree out front that we said we need to keep this tree is the one that they want to take down. And I, I looked at invasive species in Connecticut, and then this Norway maple is actually the largest percentage of shade trees in Connecticut. And, yes, it's an invasive, but there is no removal order in place for it. I just think we've done a lot for this applicant, and the one mature tree that we want to keep, the applicant now wants to get rid of. I think that's asking a little bit too much.
It, I think it's like right in here.
Yeah.
The colored photo that was passed around.
Colored photo?
There's, there's a much, if I may, there's a much larger maple tree. It's just to the right of the display area off the northwest corner that is remaining. It's much bigger than the Norway maple, the twelve-inch Norway maple.
This is the one that looks healthiest, in all honesty, this, that tree right there. I mean, the one in back there actually has a dual or maybe a triple or quadruple trunk, and.
I think it's a triple.
Pardon?
I think it's a triple.
Triple?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. And they end up getting crotch rattle a lot of times, and they fall apart. This one is a good-looking tree. It really is, yeah. So, I'm not in favor of removing it. Okay, Commissioner Cavignaro?
Would it be possible to relocate the tree? I'm not sure if that's possible, or if it's costly. It seems like this is a big issue for all of us, at the very least. Yeah, if it's possible to relocate it, that's all.
I think Mr. Foley knows that better than I do. What size, or do you know, size they can do?
Location of the tree? Microphone, please.
Ninety-six inch or whatever spade?
There's also, there are people that actually, I moved a couple of trees on my property that are actually larger than this, that were done by hand dug and hand being bald of burlap. So, I mean, it's.
So what's your recommendation?
I, I mean, my opinion is, this tree is healthy where it sits. I, you know, and now, and they're also requesting that this, this gets millings out in the front of this, and I mean, it's green space.
The millings part of it was part of the last approval, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
But this tree was supposed to stay.
Correct, correct. Now, I saw on the, I don't know if it was the application or what, or the, the letter that it says for outdoor storage. Oh, it's a note written on this. When you look at the aerial for this site.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot of outdoor storage. I don't see the need to remove that tree to make more. It just doesn't make sense to me. So, I'm not in favor of it.
Let me, let me, if I may, may I suggest a hybrid?
Pardon me?
May I suggest a hybrid? And that's that we save that tree either in the existing location or it gets relocated is one possibility. Another thing is that we get, still get permission to have the driveway to the rear, the Millings driveway, so they don't have to go across a parking lot, and then you have the landscaped area in the front.
Well, you already have the permission to do the millings in that area, correct?
I don't think we do on the north side. No, that's new. That's all new. Yeah, so what we'd like, the driveway in the rear, going through the grass area now, to the back, so we can have the equipment go back and forth there, so we can still cut the size of the display area down and have that landscaped with the irrigation.
Peter, we'll need to see impervious coverage too, because you're.
We already have, impervious coverage is sixty-two percent.
But you're adding to it with the driveway?
No, with, with the, with the changes, that we're proposing sixty-two. If we have to work around that tree, it'll be even less than that.
Okay, so.
Save the tree either where it is today or relocate it in an area that's approved by the town.
I, I would like to save the tree, period. Leave it right where it is.
Yeah, I mean, it's a healthy tree. It's, there's no doubt. I mean, I.
Alan?
I mean, we, I buy equipment from all different.
Can't hear you.
I buy equipment from all different vendors, and when people know what they're going for, they, the display, it's just my opinion, the display means nothing. If I go to Connecticut Bobcat, I don't need, they don't have machines across the whole front of their building. You know you're going to a Bobcat dealership, that's where you go. You're buying a Caterpillar piece of equipment, and when you go to Caterpillar in Newington, they don't have Caterpillar equipment lying across the front. You know where you're going, you know where you're getting. So for us to, again, we've asked that this tree stay. The tree should stay, and if, in the applic, the previous application, Michelle, this Millings area was already approved? I don't remember that.
You approved it outside storage area, you did not have a driveway coming down the north side.
That's right.
So you had, it was kind of more elongated along the front. You were saving the tree, and it was kind of elongated, so what this proposal is kind of shortening it up and then adding the driveway.
So the impervious coverage that's going, that's being added with that roadway, right? So.
This shows you what was approved, was this dotted long area, saving this tree. What they're looking to do is, what's the hatched area along with this road?
Okay.
So the, this was originally.
This is a lot more coverage now than.
Wait, you had to read it, please.
I think we keep the tree, allow the, what was approved, you know, with the millings working around it. Again, people know what they're, if they're going to buy a piece of Deuce on equipment, they're, they're going there. They already know what they're going for. I don't see taking this tree out.
So it'd be, it would be, our request was go from four thousand three hundred twenty-one square feet of display area and lose that one tree and plant two trees in front of it. It was going to go down to three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight, I think, so it would be reduced from that because the area around that one Norway maple would be removed from the millings.
Yeah, or leave the tree.
As per the plan that indicates an area where there are no millings right around the tree. And then we'd like to have access to the rear. And then, and then the landscaped area in the front will be expanded so they can have the irrigation system have a nice, look nice as you're going in and out of the building. And you see it from the street.
Yeah, we want to save the tree.
Okay. Commissioner Wagner?
So, this drawing that was going to remove the maple does have some kind of an arc around the Norway maple. Is that far enough away, Commissioner Foley, to protect the tree?
Wherever the drip line of the tree is now, it should be two feet beyond the drip line of the tree is where.
Your microphone's not on.
Two feet beyond the drip line of the tree is where the millings should be allowed to begin. Around that drip line and then add two feet would be safe for the root system.
Okay, do we know where the drip line is?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, for the record, Glenn Martin with Design Professionals. That curve around the tree was previously approved. That was the limit of the grading in the previous application. So if we could maintain that curve at least, we would, we would like to do that.
Where is that in conjunction with the dri, where is that in conjunction with the drip line?
I would think it's very close, because it is just a twelve-inch maple.
So we'll keep it without, you're asking for the, for the roadway, right?
Correct.
So it's a give and take. So let's go, leave the tree, two feet beyond the drip line, right, is where the radius would be of the millings.
Okay.
So, so what would we be approving then? We're going to allow the roadway in back. We're going to allow the millings, which were already approved, and maybe even move them a little closer to the tree where the drip line is, right?
Two foot away from the drip line.
Two foot away from the drip line, wherever that is. Now, they show here two autumn blaze maple trees. We wouldn't be asking for that anymore.
No.
Yeah. Just so I know what, what we're doing here.
And you are.
Yeah, they're going, they're going to irrigate no matter what, once you've made a decision on what you'll allow.
Okay, and you are removing a bush at the end of the sidewalk, correct?
Yeah, there is, there is one that is a, what kind was that again?
Small dogwood?
Yeah, small dogwood.
Dogwood?
It's like that high.
Okay.
It doesn't look that good. We're just out there.
Okay, so.
The tree with the triple trunks is going to remain for now? Until it falls over?
Till eventually goes.
Okay. So, would somebody like to, do we need a motion for that, Michelle, or?
Either that or by consensus. What I'm hearing is we're going to allow the driveway, we're going to allow a small modification to the milling area, we're protecting the tree with two feet beyond the drip line.
Correct.
So we're approving the change order, but with some slight modifications to what was proposed.
What do you see, Commissioner Foley?
With this roadway, the plant material that's in there has been installed to, and Jeff's been out and inspected.
Along the northern boundary, you mean? Yes, it is there.
Solid.
It's in the picture, I think. I think there's one dead evergreen that may need to be replaced, but we do have a current landscape bond.
I saw one dead one today.
Yeah, there's a landscape bond that we have for that.
Okay, we just want to make sure that that gets replaced. And if you can see, there's, it'll take a couple of them that might be in distress, so.
Okay. So, yes, thank you for reminding me. Commissioner Carey, Commissioner LeBlanc left, so you are being seated for Commissioner LeBlanc. Okay. So, is it agreed consensus of the group that we move forward as discussed? Yes, okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We need a motion to extend the meeting, I believe.
A move or extend the meeting to twenty after ten?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have, we have, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
I don't care, do roll call, I said no.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cavignaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Viteri?
Aye.
Commissioner Foley?
No.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dexter? Commissioner Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye. Is there a percentage? It's not a hundred percent, right? Yeah, it's super majority, right? Yeah, I know you. Okay. What's that? Yeah. Two-thirds, yeah, okay. The motion passes, thank you. Okay. Bonds, do we have any bonds? We do, right?
Make a motion, we approve subdivision bond, twenty-one dash thirty-nine P, Kilkenny Heights Two, amount nine hundred twenty thousand, reduction of six hundred sixty-three thousand and nine hundred, and a balance of two hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred.
Okay, we'll take these separately, because they're separate. So we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
And the second bond, twelve dash twenty-eight P, Nutmeg Village subdivision sidewalks on South Satellite Road, amount thirty-seven thousand five hundred, reduction thirty-three thousand seven hundred fifty, and a balance of three thousand seven hundred fifty.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, and other note, we just are receiving a few applications. Scannell Lovett, major home occupation, and Scannell Properties, minor re-subdivision or redesign of a cul-de-sac.
That actually was one that was already approved by the commission, but they did not file the MyLars within the timeframe, so it is back in front of you for an approval.
Okay. That's a minor. That's a minor re-subdivision, is that how the application came in originally?
Yes, all it entails is a redesign of the cul-de-sac of Kennedy Road, so.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, we've got other water pollution control we received. Michelle, is there any other old business?
The only thing I just want to make you aware of is, we did receive an application, the mobile station on Oakland Road is coming back as a gas station again. It's been, I think, 10 years plus as not a gas station, but they did come in for tanks, so it is coming back. I have requested just a site plan, just so that we can see if there's any changes or anything. The one thing that we will want to address is, they do have a temporary conditional permit for U-Hauls that we will be in conflict with the tanks, so we would like to talk to them about that. But I just wanted you to be aware of it, because it won't need any new zoning approvals because it still exists as a gas station as far as the site plan goes, but you will see some activity out there eventually, so. Yeah, I think people will be happy to hear that.
Okay. That's it?
That's primarily it. We will have a meeting in two weeks. We will try to do the public hearing for Kennedy Road, and we have the restaurants for the Unit 5 at Evergreen Walk Restaurants that we'll have on that night as well.
Okay. Multiple restaurants, correct?
Correct, three.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move or adjourn?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, and all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, good night.